I told everyone, don't forget water. All right, well, it's 5:30, so we'll go ahead and get started. And I'll call the committee of the whole to order at 5:30. Is there anything for the good of the order? Go ahead, Michelle.
So I just wanted to bring up that at the public issues committee meeting that I had last week, the big topic is climate change, and a lot of the big cities are working on things centered around climate change. They're working on heat pump campaigns, charging stations. Des Moines is working on an electric passenger ferry. And incentivizing green building, solar panels, those are some of the things that really seems like the larger cities are really working hard on on that right now. So that was the topic that I just shared at.
Do I may add to that? Part of that is actually requiring or legislating, at the very least, encouragements for things like keep ups. But the writing's on the wall, and things like heat pumps will be required for both businesses and residences in the not-too-distant future. So that's something that we need to start considering, even in the role. At the very least, how to encourage that type of thing through education or other means. And try to get, if not ahead of the game, at least stay up with the game on environmental issues like this.
Any other questions or comments for Michelle? Or any anything else for the good of the order? No? All right, then we'll just move on to the review of the regular meeting agenda. There's nothing out of the, you know, just a couple of normal business items under consent agenda. But did anyone have any other concerns or things they want to point out on the upcoming council agenda? No? All right, then we'll go and move to our discussion items. So our first item is the Skilful Work for the Arts Community Engagement with Tammy Kellogg. Hey Tammy.
Hi.
Welcome.
Do you want me up here?
I don't know, Laura, where, oh, would that work? Okay.
And I've got a small part of it. Could you bring up the presentation? It's the parts one really quick. And then just to introduce, I guess I can start with introduction because that was one of the things I had to do. This is Tammy Kellogg. We've been working with her for a couple of months. She's a facilitator that actually at least one person in this room knows, council. You've worked with Tammy at this point. She is our facilitator for our farm fish group and then also for all of our caucuses. And I had opportunity to meet and work with her probably close to eight years ago. And so when we came up and kind of bumped up into an issue of relationship, she was the person that we reached out to. She is going to hand out kind of just what her, you know, what her business is, how much experience she has. She's been doing this for almost 30 years in the field. And she does public work, private work. I'll let you go into it, but I could almost, I have it kind of memorized, but is this supposed to work? Am I pointing the wrong way?
Can you turn down?
I think I should turn it off.
Okay.
So why are we here? The main reason why we're here is that DFA requested a facilitated conversation late last year. Some of the council members in this room were at that meeting. We had a meeting about the first week of December. And they had requested a conversation with council, just in general, about, really about their project and the loss of their project. And they wanted to have a conversation, not just with staff, but obviously with the mayor and also council. Tammy will talk a little bit more about what our goals are this evening, but in general, our goal is to have a quick conversation that will include what could a facilitated conversation look like, not just with DFA, but also with the arts in general, and where will that lead to? So we'll talk about roles, responsibilities, expectations. We did add, just do a quick update. So I don't think I have anything else, but I will step in whenever needed. And so Tammy, you can come on up here, and I'll keep this on the screen just in case you need it.
Okay, sounds great. Well, I sent around a copy of some of my, some of my work, some of my thoughts about how I work with clients, what I'm kind of known for. And Rick, you kind of know, one of the main things in this particular valley and in this area is that there was a longstanding conflict between the fish habitat recovery folks and the tribes and the farmers who are on the lands and the flood interests who are trying to figure out how to regulate and keep people safe around all of that. And there was really kind of a longstanding conflict. So the place that is the sweet spot for my work is where there is either longstanding conflict or kind of situational conflict. And people call me in, and I work with them to design a process that hopefully helps to gain the trust of those involved. And yet, at the same time, is taking some pragmatic steps towards getting actual concrete agreements. So I'm pretty well-known for being enough to let people listen, but enough to close down the conversation and get agreements and ask for it and help design the way that we can get there. So the examples of work that I've done in the past, you have one in front of you. I've done everything from helping like individual neighbors in a community that are in conflict. This one happened to be out in Bashan Island, and these individuals didn't have to work with each other, but they kind of did because they had sewage problems with, and they had clean water issues. And they had to work together to get a solution for their community. So imagine you're in your homes, the things that are most important to you and your neighbors and your neighbors and your neighbors might not all be the same. You might not all want the same issue or the same thing. So those kinds of situations are ones where it's helpful to get somebody else to come in and help you have that conversation. I've worked on multi-jurisdictional things where people have to, different jurisdiction has to have to figure out how to like share money or some resources or programming or decide a strategic direction. And as well, I've done stuff with professional organizations and NGOs, including everything from arts organizations through community event planning, Institute for Community Change, and environmental organizations, lots and lots of strategic planning. The Snohomish Health District, so I've worked with councils before. And in that, I think my job is to design and facilitate a balanced process. So I think my job here tonight, outside of introducing myself to you and answering questions for you about that, is to figure out, how can I help make this process balanced for you? Like, what is it that you want to get out of this? What will feel like good outcomes to you? So that when I'm working with the other groups at the table, I'm taking everyone's interests into account when we're convening and trying to solve this, because it sounds like it's kind of been here for a little while. Yep, okay. So today, if I'm going to get input on your outcomes, and before I move on to the outcomes, I think I want, this feels really formal right now because I'm standing up. I like to sit at the table with you, but I understand the process. Does anyone have any questions for me? Like, who am I? What do I, how do I think about conflict? What do I think is important about it? Anyone want to throw anything out? Yeah. Could you talk a little bit more about your organizational development work? And I say that because if we have an arts and culture plan, which I hope we will, there's a lot of capacity building that can go along with that. And I'm hoping you might have that experience and tell me more about it. Interesting. So the core of my work has always been organization development. A lot of people look at conflict resolution like it's just a mediated process and it's a technique. Whereas I look at organizations and systems as all actually, you may not believe it or not, wanting to work towards common good. The problem is they have different perspectives about what the common good is. So in organization development work, you name it, I've done it. I can't believe it's been 30 years. But I've done everything from capacity building for individuals and teams and leadership teams and strategic planning, performance measures, you name it. That's everything that gets done inside an organization to make them more efficient and effective. That's technically what the definition of an organization development consultant is. Those are the kinds of things I've done, and I actually have done that as an internal consultant working for King County for a number of years. And then I've done it for about 20 years since I've been out on my own, doing the exact same thing, consulting back for state and federal and local jurisdictions. So I think what you're looking at is how do we build, how do we both build a strategic arts plan? And then have the capacity to staff up to that? And so from my perspective, good strategic planning takes both of those two things into account. Just like working for you here right now, I have to balance and manage what resources you have to dedicate to this, because you don't have an unlimited amount, I assume. And I also have to look at what the staff and people resources are that you have. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, just to follow up on the organizations that we would work with.
Yeah, good question.
And have you worked with outcome-based funding?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I've worked for, like, yes, I've worked for USAID, like the aid to developing countries, and a lot of them have specific outcome-based activities that when I went abroad and was doing that work, that's what I was achieving with them. In fact, that's where I did a lot of work with NGOs. The question is, what is, so if you want some kind of outcome-based thinking connected to this project, that's what I'd like you to tell me today, like, what are the key pieces that are going to be important to you? So what are the outcomes you're looking for? And just so that you know, I'll just call on people if no one asks or answers when I ask a question, just to get things going. So, because I know, Rick, tell me, here's the three outcomes that are for, that I worked on with your mayor, Laura, and your city manager. To improve the working relationships by, and I think it's up there right there, by increasing the understanding of and intentions, the understanding of intentions and limitations. Then also bringing clarity and agreement around the responsibilities. So first, there's working relationships between people, and if we have broken working relationships, we're not going to get very far because we don't have good conversations. Then there's, what are those responsibilities? And so I suspect 90% of my work inside organizations, when there is conflict present, it actually is mostly landed in an unclear understanding of rules and responsibilities. I know that might sound surprising, but the way it ends up showing up is that people overstep because they think that's what they were supposed to do. Or somebody doesn't step up because they didn't really think that was theirs to do. And those, then you start getting conflict over time built up about people not doing the things that you think they're supposed to be doing, because it's not very clear. So helping to bring some clarity to that, the third part is to gain agreement and support for the intention to create and guide future actions of the city by a strategic arts and culture plan for the city. And that was, I would say, when I first came in, not what I was thinking was the, was going to be one of your objectives, but it became pretty clear right off the bat that a part of what was lingering for many people is what is the intention of Duval around the arts? And how strategic can you be around putting the pieces together to get there? Especially since, you know, you all, council members change over time, so you don't necessarily have the same vision. But that's why, you know, your comp plan already calls for this arts and culture activities and the commission that you have. So that's what the third one is. The last one is to help you have some conversations around what value you might bring from having an arts plan for the city. Back to the question, who's involved? I'm going to say, let's hold on to that for the next steps after I figure out what your objectives are. What is it? What is it that if you looked back at this, let's say, six months from now, not that it's going to take that long, but six months from now, you looked back at this, what is an outcome that you would like to have seen, observed, achieved?
Well, I think you use six-month outcome, but my, the outcome I care most about is my, you know, four-year, five-year, or even 10-year.
Okay.
As far as the near-term outcome, I think the first three items that you talked about fall online, kind of a six-month time plan.
Okay.
The fourth one is a longer, you know, longer-term goals and vision, what we really want for Duval. My, you know, my idea is to increase the value of arts to the city. And I think many, perhaps all of my fellow council members share that idea. Bring it more visible, not only to our residents, but also to those outside of the city of Duval, where they might think, well, you know, Duval's a cool city. It's an artsy kind of city. We like to go there and visit and, you know, see, you know, see whatever, street art and, you know, other, you know, art galleries, things like that. So, and not to mention, you know, find food and things like that to go with it. But anyway, that's my, the longer-term vision is really what I have more in mind. And obviously, the first three items are steps to get there.
Gotcha. How about anyone else? I don't mean to put pressure on you. You're like next in the line, but you can skip. We'll go back.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you said something about understanding intentions and limitations. And I think that the roles that you talked about, roles and responsibility, creating the conflict, I think that that is at the core of, there's a lot of ideas of things what people want to see happen. We'd love to be this vibrant arts community potentially. But whose responsibility is to make that happen? Is the city here in a support role to help for others to initiate, and then we support? Or is it us to initiate? Is it funding? Is it staff support? How do we make this happen? Because it seems unlikely that we'll end up hiring a staff of arts people within the city to make all of this happen, right? And so there's going to be these partnerships, people come and go in organizations, sometimes it's hard to staff. Well, staff isn't the right word, but there's the Duval Cultural Commission, and sometimes it's hard to find volunteers who want to be on that board. And so at what level do we sort of possibly promise certain things that we aren't fully in control over the partners and the effort that those partners may or may not put into it? And so I feel like that's where the city has gotten, you know, negative feedback. Is there's an expectation maybe that the city would have driven more of it? Or, I'm not really sure. I'm not, I am actually unsure of exactly what, what our role was supposed to be or what the expectations were placed on us or others. So yeah, but really, we do have limitations, and, you know, I'm always trying to balance all the ideas. There's so many things people in this community want. Arts and culture is one, but it's not everything. And so how do we balance that?
Right.
And I think that's, you know, other groups might say, wow, why are you suddenly, you know, all the focus on this? We've been saying we wanted this for 20 years. And so trying to, you can't make everyone happy, of course, but how do we figure out the appropriate amount of involvement that the city has relative to our resources?
Yep. Yeah, to pivot off what Jennifer's saying a little bit, I think of it as what I would like to see as some kind of, I don't know, almost like a blueprint, you know, where here's the city on the blueprint, and here are some vacant spots that any organization could pull into and fulfill those needs so that it's more fair to all the different organizations besides just one in particular. So again, it's just a different way of wording roles responsibilities. And like you said, I mean, there's a lot of other things besides the arts that we have to balance. So it's just kind of managing those expectations of what we can do.
I hear in that also that you're talking in part about maybe who might come to the table. So if these top three might be a little more focused, as is indicated from the list, on DFA, DCC, and other partners, you're leaning into the other partners part for the table.
Yeah.
Ditto. And that's actually a little bit of what your question was, who's going to be at the table? Did you have more?
No, I was about it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know any.
Amy.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll go next. I think the city has, my view is this, and I've worked in neighborhood-based community development, so that's my background. But I think the city has a responsibility to be a catalyst. And that includes some funding for an arts initiative, arts culture plan, you know, I think that. But I also think that organizations have a responsibility to have a business strategy, a fundraising strategy to bring resources into Duval. Because Duval is not going to, because of all the other things that we have responsibilities for, you know, to really have a robust arts and cultural plan, we're going to need other funding partners. And as far as I have seen, and, you know, COVID affects things, you know, four cultures are a great resource out there. But we're going to need more than four culture to have a robust, long-term arts and cultural plan. And I always have felt that nonprofit organizations need to look at their operations from a business planning perspective, and they need to take responsibility for some of their revenue. And, you know, that's why when I look at nonprofits, I actually look at their tax returns to see what they're doing.
And so do you see the outcome that you're looking for? I'm kind of hearing a little bit more about the longer term versus the short term with you as well.
Yeah, because we all have responsibilities, and that's part of their long term. Is, you know, initially, we've got to get a plan and all of that, but inherent in that needs and responsibilities has to be, I think, some shared agreement on how we are going to fund in a long-term, robust way, an arts and cultural plan. We have parks, we have all kinds of things that, you know, city has to fund. So, and plus, I think it makes nonprofits weak if they only think that government's going to fund them forever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one thing, just to clarify too, is the city and the DCC are one in the same. So the DCC is an entity of the city. And I think, you know, these points are really good. I think one of the key things is that one of the biggest challenges that's created a lot of friction, a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of severe frustration over the last five years has been not having anybody in the city that is dedicated to more than a few hours a week of working on DCC or arts or an event. And I feel very strongly that the city has a responsibility to have somebody that has dedicated time to support the DCC and through the DCC, support and provide guidance and what have you to some of the other urgent organizations. From the city perspective, that can mean that staff person writing letters of support for grant applications for some of the other nonprofits. It can mean providing, getting the DCC to provide volunteer assistance, creating a nonprofit that's an arm of the city to do outside fundraising, to leverage city resources and cultural resources and other things. But I think the hardest part right now is not having that staffing internally to carry any of the weight. Or if the weight can be carried, it can be carried for a meeting, but it can't be carried consistently. And so that provides a significant amount of gaps in anything that the city can actually be involved in besides writing a check or providing OT staffing for pulling the events together. One of the things that I see, having been in the community for more than 20 years, is that the arts is not just a today thing. It is a historic thing that goes back 40, 50 years at least with how this community came to be what it was. And as I talk to people in the community, many people move here because of our events, because of the arts and culture. And particularly over the last few years, really exasperated by COVID, most of that's gone away, and there's a real feeling of loss for many folks, whether it's people in the community, people in the city, or people that are parts of the arts organization. And one of the key solutions is making sure we have the resources to provide that support, even at a base level, even if it's just technical assistance. I also see this as being integrally tied to the city's long-term economic development. To council member Lengos' point, when you look at, and council member Napland mentioned parks as well, when you tie in those parks and the events and as we're standing, that really the arts, the parks, our local businesses are part of, you know, we can't look at it all in a silo, but we have to look at it in kind of that higher level, what this helps facilitate and support the other. And the art supports our businesses, the businesses support the arts, same goes for our outdoor recreation. And we have a lot of competing priorities, but if we want to achieve some of those competing priorities, one of our top issues is getting more economic development and getting more revenue into the city. And we can't do that without the proper staffing and support to support the DCC and provide ancillary support to our nonprofits within the arts.
It's providing the ancillary support, and then the part that you were talking about, which is then having an agreement-making with them when you know that they're on study, too, so that they have the capacity to complete on their parts of things. Anyone else?
Where's that?
Okay, staff on the end.
The council member Oak has it.
Yeah.
So I feel like you guys have brought up a few really good points and about the roles, responsibilities, and having a blueprint. I kind of wanted to take that a little further and say that I think the city needs to have something that we can provide the community as to what our roles are in the, in, because there's misinformation out there right now, and it's not being corrected. And the only thing that's out there is what DFA has a vague, long question and answer, and the city has no responses to that. And it's frustrating, it's hard, we can't, if we respond, it seems like we don't support arts, I think. As a council member, it feels like that. I just feel that there needs to be more accurate information that's available to the public about what the roles are and what our roles as a city are. Some people think we own the land down there and just decided to sell it. And that's not true.
I'm aware from some phone calls of the long legacy of this, that, the other happening.
It's, I find that very frustrating. I think there needs to be more beyond roles and responsibilities, but that's a really great start.
We might actually want to modify this and add that, because when I looked at what are the next steps, I'm going to go from yesterday to next part, because I don't want to get you completely off your timing here. But there were, so four things that I had for next steps, and the last one was around communications and communicating the agreements and the next steps, because I think that is missing from there. I mean, there's an assumption someone's going to communicate stuff there. But there's also the staffing, who is it that's going to do that? And there's also, if we bring people together on it, then we have more people saying the same thing about what the roles are. So, so three, four next steps. One, determine who will participate. So the suggestion is that it's an ad hoc, small group, and I want to emphasize. And I want to emphasize small, even though I'm sure all of you would love to take on another project and with your council member hat. But I think it's going to work better if we have a lean and mean kind of group. That's just a recommendation, you can you can modify that as you see. And then there's obviously the DFA, I want to say one thing about that. I think there may be, there may be splits and or differences of opinions about how to move forward from within that organization. So originally I had proposed working with them so that they could get on the same page. I'm now not so sure uh that needs to happen anyway. I think it's just a fact that people have organizations with multiple people in it and they don't think the same. So there may be some people who want to kind of get on board with this, more of the let's get clear on our roles, our organizations and do something more strategic focused. And there may be some who would like to spend a little bit of time talking about the art center and specifically where, what is the status of that? So I can't answer that. Uh, they're they're having conversations with me and asking that and saying people are asking them about it. So it's back to this communications thing. Uh, so who else other than the DCC, DFA? So if you guys can come up or give Laura those names, or if you want to talk, take the time to talk about it now, that's great too. Um, yeah.
I mean, we have Northwest Art Center, which is a nonprofit. They, you know, mostly have classes and other things, but they're very supportive of the arts. They hosted the high school art show, uh they're very involved in the community. So I would say organizations like that.
Um, I would also add um Duval Days. Well, they're mainly a festival, um they have expanded into providing live music um each year. And uh one of the individuals that's part of um Duval Days actually has a production company and and does a lot of shows throughout the area. Um, and I think that's another component, while it's not solely arts, it's important to that conversation as they expand and change their event as the time goes by. Um, and I think one thing I didn't mention, and Councilmember Hope brought it up as well, is communications. Is that none of this can happen unless we have communications and somebody with the ability to communicate on staff. Um, and that's one of our big gaps as well, to Councilmember Hope's point. Um, the reason why there hasn't been city communication is because we don't have anybody to do that communication right now. And not having somebody to do that communication means only the the core messages that have to come out from the city come out, um which exacerbates the bigger issue uh with confusion and distrust and frustration.
Anyone else on the topic?
I I have a, uh, I raised this at our um pre-council uh meeting and it I did, I'm just going to state it as a concern. Um, I, when we were doing one agreement with DFA, I went back and read documents back to, I think it was like nineteen ninety nine. And so I feel like I understand really ongoing support for a a project. Um, in my experience, they are not ready to do. Um, and there's a number of reasons I say that, but you know, participation in something like this could could help them over time. Uh, you know, get some version of their dream. The, one of the things I'm counting on um is your ability to not let that part of the discussion take all the oxygen out of the room and we not get some other work done through this project. Um, and um, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. I mean, I think that's a real risk and I think some of us have been really because I won't speak for other people, I mean, I've had the concern that that could happen. Um, so I'm really counting on your strength um to do that. And that if it just goes completely awry, it's like any other, I guess, in a way, negotiation. Sometimes you just have to take a break to make sure the oxygen goes and then everybody else can get back to the meaningful work.
I think that it's a really good point and I think there may actually be a way we sequence and who comes to meetings. There may be a core that we do this with. This is kind of where I'm at lately with this and, but I'll do more thinking after I I hear from from you all and mold this over. But um there may be a subset conversation that is just focused on answering a question. And I don't think it has to precede this starting. Because I think there is some benefit from bringing everybody into the room and saying, hey, we all agree these are good objectives, which means we've all in some way contributed to not having these things. So that there's a group that's working forward on that. And we may have a little sidestep, that is kind of how I'm leaning towards that piece of the conversation. Not that it can't be a part of this and a part of conversations. And I am really good at helping to unlock those locked pieces because we'll have to set some ground rules and agreements about the way we're going to operate. And then my job is to help us to operate within that because it's only going to work if it's working for everybody. It can't just work for one, two, or a few.
That brings up a good point. I'm not in favor of doing this in small groups. I think the entire council needs to be at the table for all conversations. And there's a lot of reasons, but there's been so much that's happened. This has gone on for twenty five years, these conversations have gone on. I've only been a council member for five. And we have a lot of new council members that haven't been on the council that long. And so it just, it it just doesn't make sense for us not to all be at the table.
What, so can I just clarify, at the table for these?
All of the conversations, yes.
All of these?
That's how I feel.
And if there was a conversation also specifically about the status or future of an art center? You're just saying all, all, got it, okay.
More so.
Yes.
Well, that's why I want, that's what I'm trying to tease out is if that actually is a place that there needs to be a kind of deeper dive with the group as a whole, uh then I think that makes a lot of sense too, so.
Yeah.
From what you say, I mean, we should all be invited. And in at a minimum, that's where our rules have a forum.
Yeah.
Be a part of that, right? We should, we should have a forum represent all of us, is what I would think.
I, we should, yeah. And a lot of the council members haven't seen the presentations from DFA on that particular building that they've planned on putting in. It's a fifteen plus million dollar building. And I don't think a lot of people understand that, that it's it's these presentations that they did were years ago that they brought to us. And so it's.
Okay, that makes sense.
I do.
I think, you know, just to, we have, I don't know if it's any written anywhere specifically, but maybe more of a gut feeling of a threshold of work that is done by a committee, which would be three or so council members, and you're feeling for sure that that's above the threshold because this is a very deeply rooted thing. And so you feel that should go beyond like what a committee would do.
But I I'd like to know how the rest of the council feels on it, of course, but that's.
I'm torn on it because I I do feel like this is a community wide issue and we were all elected to represent the community and we all have different perspectives. And there could be a benefit of having everyone there and everyone understanding what the concerns are. Because it does seem like there have been a lot of misunderstandings. And if once again, only a small group really gets to understand what happened and what might happen in the future, we'll be back to square one again, I guess, is my concern. So I I I see what uh she's saying. That I, I don't know. I I was just wondering if there's a way to compromise a bit or something in between where there's more check and points, the whole group or how how you've done that before. Because I mean, there is more uh functionality with a smaller group, you know, there's more agility. You can work through things more quickly. If you have a table full of this many people, it takes, just even go through one time, it takes forever. So I'm wondering if, you know, what what has worked for you in the past.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking is that maybe I hear that there needs to be a few things that either are discussed with the group as a whole or that come back to the group as a whole for discussion. And and present and or presentation or whatever else that needs to be. It feels like the, for me, my history with groups like this is that if there's a a perceived power imbalance, there that that can, that can kind of um uh cause, cause delays in moving forward as quickly as you can. Um, there's the logistics of literally you guys getting uh all of your calendars together to do that kind of thing. So those are kind of some of the bigger issues, the power dynamic, the logistics. Uh, but I do hear that there are a few core things that can't stay with a small group. That's that's clear. And and maybe I could do a little, you know, sorting around with a process and come and share something back um with Laura or and or she can share with you, I can come back. Um, and or I can do a design that has you doing the whole thing and then you can take a look at it to see, oh, wow, that's a little bit much. So if we were tackling the relate, working relationship part, again, a little bit easier to have that one done on a smaller scale. But you're right, you do only get that smaller scale, having improved the relationship. Because there can be the perception that when they bring that back to you as a whole, you may or may not agree with it. So we need to work out some, a process by which you can give concurrence as well to the kinds of things that are being said. The second one, the roles and responsibilities, I think, is just, it's a, it is a fair amount of slogging through stuff. And you may, and you may or may not have the time and energy for doing that. Again, a reason why a smaller group might be better at that. It needs some pre-work done outside the meeting. We don't just come to the meeting and go, oh, flip chart board, what do you think your roles are relative to this or this? They need to do, they though, some of those groups need to do a little bit of work before they come in the room. Um, you guys do need to do a little sorting of that. I would assume that might happen through staff doing some first, you know, tier cut of that type of stuff. But um that's the kind of thing, you know, that you might also be able to expect around that. So not sure if I should call a question on that or you have want, have more conversation that you want to have around the all participant, the not, or the combo, the some modified form of that.
Is everyone open to like a modified type form or at least to consider that? Or are you still just on the one side?
I I guess I would be open to it. I would want there to be good communications.
Like, uh, yeah. Maybe it's like you don't want a small group to um or for it to be perceived like that's the promise to the other groups without the whole buy and the whole nearby. I think that's probably one of the biggest concerns, right, is?
Yeah, yeah. So there needs to be a couple step process for, particularly for you who have a larger group that need to agree on things anyhow. You're not giving authority to a small group to firmly agree. You're giving authority to a smaller group to have the conversation and bring trust. Yeah.
I think what I'm hearing too is it could be a combination. So there could be larger and smaller means, almost the way like our IOC and caucuses work, where you have to go in, dig in deep in small groups, but then you have to come back to the larger group, talk about your work and then build on that consensus.
Yes, and I just want to say back to your comment about some a lot of nonprofit organizations do not have the capacity to sit with their boards or full organizations and think through their roles in a uh in a process that they've not been a part of before. And so I don't know, when you talked about these other organizations like the Northwest Art Center, Duval Days, I've really only looked at your um your DCC kind of structure that surrounds that and your code or cop plan, sorry, around that. So I don't know whether other people will feel real steady on their feet around that, but that is one of the reasons why. I mean, I'm just going to say, if you do invest the time and energy, you might as well invest the time and energy to actually get the real agreements be able to be made. And if that takes this path that she's talking about where it's caucus and then it's full group or it's the other way, which is a small representative group from here. And then if you are taking action on something or agreeing to something, then it comes back here. Either way, it's possible those other groups may need a little bit of support to get themselves ready to get to the table. So I just offered that as well.
I I totally agree. I think that it's easier, this will be easier process maybe for us because we have the council, we meet regularly, we have procedures. But these other organizations like struggle to meet maybe regularly or they don't have a full commission or they don't have a full body. And so I think it is going to be much harder for them. And so I'd want to make sure that we're reaching out to them as we're kind of refining a scope as well to make sure can they also take this on? Because I think we will be holding hands, honestly, with our organizations as well. But I think the outcome could really be beneficial to these groups and really set them upright also for the next twenty years.
I mean, I loved it, so all of the pieces that you guys have been talking about, the blueprint, the the part, the partnerships and the need for the partnerships and the need to, because you are just a small set of people here. You do need those volunteers that are out there and you need those volunteer organizations and you need them to be coming to the table. You just need it to happen in a way that um has clear communications and expectations. I'm just going to say the last piece that we want to add to ours before we leave is we want to add something on communications. So there needs to be an agreed upon outcome of this that you guys and whoever else participates knows there will be an agreed upon set of communications that we, communication messaging, whatever key communications that everyone will agree to to go out. So we don't have as much of that splintered stuff that uh or varying, well, varying perspectives will continue to happen, but we'll have some some joint communications going out. That would be my suggestion from the conversation is to add that. So uh call the question, uh do you want me to put together something that looks at uh a modified either with the full group consensus, the caucus and full group method? And or I can also write one up that is the small representative group where they come back to you as a whole.
Yeah, would you guys want to see like two options or is that what you're saying, kind of two different?
I mean, it's basically.
Yeah.
That's the two.
Minor modifications, but I mean, is that interesting to everybody? Yeah, okay.
I I do like, I do like the idea of this, the small groups going back to the council as as a whole. I think there's a lot of probably details and minutia that maybe the bigger group doesn't need to be involved with. And the things that really matter or the things that really, we really need to understand just from a, just from a educational standpoint, come back to the bigger, you know, bigger group. So so I think one of your concerns of of Councilmember Hope was was uh that that we have, we dwell a better understanding amongst the council as a whole, which absolutely we need. I for one, don't have a good understanding and want to uh, you know, want to make sure that that change is going, going forward. And I believe this 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 is more of an iterative process, not just a one time groups come back to the bigger group. I think it's a multiple time type of uh type type of.
Uh, in the original proposal, I have two, three work sessions.
Yeah, good.
Yeah. And that's, again, I just want to, don't want to, I want to make sure nobody misunderstands the wording here. We're not producing the arts and culture plan for the city. We're producing the readiness of a group of people and city for doing that. Good, okay. And I think those are two good clarifications that sounds like might sync up with what you're saying. The the small group to to large group model versus caucuses is um is things that matter and or things that you guys need to understand more. And you can help me figure out which those are as it's being written up or Laura can help with the original, with the initial draft of it. Sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything else they want to add? You're feeling good about it?
I think so. Thank you, Paul, Tammy, thank you very much. Look forward to hearing more.
Okay.
So so next step is you're going to come back to us with a more specific proposal.
Uh, Laura, is it, is it coming back to them with a proposal? Is it coming back to them with a proposal and a contract at the same time so that we can get going with this?
Say both because we'll have kind of two versions.
Yeah.
And you know, we've you've been talking a little bit internally with our committees and like we're trying to best going because I think even by the time it starts, it's going to be June.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Um, so I'd like to try and keep this going with a scope and a potential cost and contract. So I'd like to try and keep this going with a scope and a potential cost and contract at best.
Has the group, have you seen the contract, the scope that I wrote up before with with the budget estimate?
I did share it with the land use committee.
Okay.
I don't believe the whole council is seeing.
Okay, well, then we'll, we'll work on that once we modify. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thanks again. Have a good night. So next step, we'll have our asset optimization discussion, our facilities master plan project with architects.
ARC.
ARC, sorry.
Thank you. So this is Daniel from ARC.
Hello, everybody.
Assisting the public works department this evening. This is just part of, I think, a couple of presentations. We had one presentation, I think about a month ago, and it was via Zoom and Daniel was here to do that. I think we've made, in general, I think we've made a lot of progress. We forget some.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, I think we've made a lot of progress, but we are, you know, we have a couple of timelines that we're struggling with. So we're going to talk about those as well. And the materials that Daniel is going to present are essentially their draft materials. Talk to you about where you're where we're at. You'll notice that there's like only two pages of three pages on here. It's to have just kind of like, here's where we're at, because we haven't even, I haven't seen all three pages yet. So this is just to talk about what these chapters look like, to talk about the capital needs assessment and to look at a couple of options. We're just not quite there yet to show all of the materials. They haven't even come to the city in complete whole yet. We just got some new information yesterday that was shared with me that we're starting to get information from the sub consultant on the capital needs assessment as well, which is a spreadsheet that gets put together. But I'm going to let Daniel kind of talk about these things and then we're going to have to obviously take questions. And we'll be back again.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for finally getting to meet you in person. Also appreciate that. Yes, just quick synopsis again. You've seen a lot of these snapshots for the facilities assessments reports. I don't expect you all to even read the in-depth report. It's a lot of pages that you can't, but you know, there's a lot of pages. And what I was hoping to just even tonight, the reason why I really liked coming tonight was to talk about the assets that you have in general and, you know, lovely, would love to get an opinion from everybody. While I know it might be impossible to give me an informed opinion without the costs. That said, I can also hit on a very high level of debriefing of each of the buildings. But I also would try to save that to the end in essence of time, knowing how long we're going here. Because I really want to get to the master plan discussion of what part of our scope was to do for you. And we've got a lot of that in this presentation here too, to show you where we are with that. As far as the assets go, I would, would, would I update you on here if you take one of these each and pass them around? This is the tool. A small eight and a half by eleven sheet is the capital needs assessment tool that you'll be getting as a city. And this is the part we were talking about where we need time with you, not you folks, but with Steve, Gavin, project manager, likely finance as well. Because what this tool do when it's all complete and filled out is that it will be a spreadsheet that can help you and literally have you see the cost per year on renovation, remodel per square foot for each of the buildings. Having gotten that you have that in hand, the small eight and a half by eleven sheet that I'm talking about right now. I think you saw the larger sheet, which is the facility matrix index. And all I'm going to say about that is because is the fact that the larger sheet was what you've seen before. That's the observation of each of the buildings. And again, remember there, the key to remember there is that the priority of the items listed, you see all the color coatings, zero to five. We tried to keep them color coded, so it's easily recognizable. But each of those numbers, again, are the observation of something that's happening within the building relative to the building component itself, okay? If you remember those numbers and simply go to now the small eight and a half by eleven sheet, you'll see probably the fourth, one, two, three, four, fifth column over the same color coatings there. Those numbers again directly correspond to each of the buildings. Essentially, the summation, again, if you go all the way to the end of the matrix of the large sheet, you'll see the summation colors there that key back to this sheet. And that's all you need to remember relative to how we put these things together. The work in progress, which is the capital needs assessment, the small sheet again, those are real numbers in time relative to costs. And as you look at that sheet, you will see again, of course, each one of the, each one of the buildings will have this tab. Each one of the buildings has a sheet like this on itself, okay? And the building itself is based on the year it's built and the building components and any expansions or any building, you know, additions to that building itself. And then this third column, you'll see the typical useful life and remaining useful life. That's a number that is just industry standard pulled out based on building components. And you see how those track. So every building will have the typical useful life and their useful remaining life based on the year the building was created. And you'll be able to see that with all the buildings as we look at them. The quantity again is just the square footage of the building. And then the cost that we just received from our cost consultants are the unit cost per building component. So once again, if you just track that left, you can see what the cost is. For instance, in today's dollars, 2022, a unit cost to do something in the landscape would be $5.50. That's a very straightforward way of just tracking this through. So you get all of the costs in today's dollars on any component that might need some work based on the assessment. And then this is where, again, we can fine tune this with you folks, like how far do you want to look ahead? In this iteration, right now, we're just showing the five year timeframe. And hearing you folks again, talking with the previous presenter, it seemed like that was even a good thing to look at right now, the snapshot, but this can stretch out for 10, 15, 20 years. So don't get frightened by the short timeframe. There's nothing driving that except you folks and how much money we you might have in in a pot to be able to take care of something. In addition to this, if you look at the years and see how there's just different dollars and you're just going, what, what the heck does this mean, you know, here and there? My cost consultant, for instance, let's look at, well, just look at the landscape again. He just took hit out of his own opinion and spread $500 over five years, you know, that type of thing. So he's the one just right now saying, based on the quality assessment index as to what we said in our observation, item, blue item number one, right? That just that's an ongoing maintenance item. So that will spread, you know, over the next five years. And he's putting some money to it over the next five years. The next item down, parking, for instance, on this spreadsheet, item three, you know, listed at, so I got there, $8 per unit cost within one, two, three years in 2025, right? Because it corresponds to the number three, which is the priority to be done within two years, I think, facility matrix, that's why that cost goes up because we're spending that money in that amount of time for that year. So a tool that is just totally customizable and likely, again, like I said, Steve and Gavin and even finance, you know, we can look at this because down at the very bottom, which isn't, which isn't complete in the red is where you could track the replacement reserve balance at the beginning of the year for what you have. And then the interest earns over time. One of the key elements I'd just like to describe in this spreadsheet now, all of the escalation costs. You see just up from the total line at the bottom where it says total yellow up one, two, three. Yeah, three and four lines up at escalation. Those costs right now are real. We're looking at seven percent escalation in 2023, 2024, five, four point five, four point five, and so on. Those are also real in today's market of building escalation costs. One small item that is also critical that I'm sure you'd like to know is that the unit costs here are also picking up all the soft costs. So if you think of construction and the general contractor is doing markup and fees and bonding and insurance, those unit costs include are included here, those unit costs. So what we're trying to show you is the biggest specific picture. But then the biggest picture is being able to pick up that plus Washington state state sales tax escalation and things like that. We're trying to cover all our bases in this spreadsheet. So you have a good snapshot of what building costs will be. That said, like I said, I wanted to give you that real update as to what these are. You'll be getting all the buildings with this type of worksheet in a, in a working tool for the city. And that's coming. We do have the cost for all what what Laura was alluding to again. We were struggling with our cost consultant and he finally got us all the costs just last Friday. And so we at least updated one sheet here to a point where I could share it, but the remaining are still coming. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand this quantity, which is square feet.
Yeah.
So is that just the square feet of the building? Because it, I mean, obviously, the square feet of landscape is different than the square feet of walk areas versus the square feet of ceilings versus
Good point.
The square feet of HVAC. I mean, you know what I mean, like it doesn't.
Yeah, that's, that's the way we generalize. We take it based on the cost per square foot, but then you can fine tune it now to quantity. So like, again, landscape wise, we know there's no landscape that the engineering building, you know. So we can fine tune it to know how, what kind of quantity of square footage, just so you can play with that within the spreadsheet. And that's something, again, we could work with Steve and Gavin on, you know, like painting, for instance, would fall under cladding. So all of your cladding would have to be redone, but it's a breakout of that subset.
So like, for example, the HVAC says $36 per unit and we have 300, 3,670. I mean, isn't there one unit?
No, that's.
Certain cost, I guess, so I'm trying to understand how you determine the cost if a building is this size versus this size.
Yeah, no, I could give my costume to explain it more detail.
Yeah.
All his software is based on the unit costs and it's not about just saying there's one mechanical unit. It's about the system that needs replaced and it's always based on the overall square footage. And he can, he can give you more detail of how he gets to that, but it's not just saying one mechanical unit.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, you know, some buildings might require a lot more parking versus other areas. So if you're just basing it on the interior square feet and then there's a unit.
Yeah, so so parking, yeah, parking would be based on overall site square footage and things like that.
It's just every single one has the same quantity.
It's because it's the engineering building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the square footage of the engineering building.
And so you've.
And then in the background, they're looking at the different line items and saying, I don't care for this building where it is. Your parking size is this big, forget that, and you solve that in the background.
So you solve for the unit cost by plugging in the actual cost.
Correct.
I see, understand now.
Yeah.
That's what I wasn't sure is that if you were determining the unit cost and then multiplying it by something, but you are creating, you're solving for the unit cost.
Yes, yes.
I get it now. I apologize. That's what I wasn't understanding, like.
Good to go.
Thank you. So, so I I just did, you know, back of an napkin here.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, if you did everything on this list
Yep.
for the public works building.
Yes.
And obviously, numbers get refined. But just adding the columns, I didn't put any sales side, you know, because you said that's all embedded in your calculation. It basically comes out to about 1.1 million if every single thing
Yeah.
is all done at once, which you won't necessarily do. No, you wouldn't do it. So, I mean, that's just not the way you run a made a building.
Right.
Right? You get down into much more specifics and you decide what really needs to be in that first year capitalized cost. And then you look at what other costs you might do over, you know, 23, 24, 25. Right, you pick and choose because, you know, your life cycle, you're, you're doing an asset management
Right.
analysis.
Right, right.
So you don't, it's, this is telling you like if you did every single thing today, that's what it's saying.
And ultimately, when all the buildings, when you see all the buildings start, you'll have some real numbers. You'll have some real numbers that you can look at over time or in one big snapshot to show you what we see as what the S asset cost would be for renovation.
No, go ahead. I was just going to ask a question about how they did the replacement reserve calculation. So you just go ahead. Oh, I'm really glad you did a replacement reserve calculation because in my experience, government does not do a really good job of taking an asset management plan and building a replacement. It's, I mean, we, we are really starting to do that with certain types of equipment and so forth. But in a building, it's totally different.
Yeah.
Because life cycle of of pieces are not, they're not a straight line calculation.
You have a flexibility within the tool like that was explained, talking to you. This is the total cost each year if you were to budget for it. Obviously, we don't have that budget, you know, flexibility in the tool when we take all these things that are blue. Let's make them tubes, hypothetically speaking, push it off.
Yeah.
And we said, okay, this year, we've, here's, here is our escalation cost if we decide to punt, right?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that gives you the future look ahead.
If you make a decision to punt something, it's much more next year or two years and then we can budget. Take rock.
That, that's the, that's the intent is that, and it's going to be scary, it's scary numbers, you know, you guys all know that. I mean, it's, but I'm not here to scare you, but I'm here to give you what I hope is a good tool that you can use and finesse it through time. The scary numbers will be the, well, we're not there yet, but they'll be the the brand new buildings that we, we hope we can get you some at some point. So if you don't mind, could we move right ahead? Sorry, could we?
Or would you like?
Just keep going until I say stop.
Okay.
We'll get to when you start seeing the sticky planning diagrams and the space planning. There you go. You can hold there a minute.
Be- before we start on the options, I had a couple of questions. In your building write-ups, you alluded to some of the buildings could use a what we call a recirc- recirculation water system.
Oh, yes.
Can you help us understand what that is?
Yeah, that's more or less like insta-hot. So in today's plumbing systems, your, your system's there now, cold water, hot water, hot water is going directly to a fixture, right? A recirculating system will keep it circulating within itself. So it's like there's a hot water loop called a closed, closed loop system. It keeps hot water near the source when you want to turn it fixtures on. And so it's, I wouldn't say it's insta-hot because there are insta-hot systems, but it makes your hot water much more quicker and efficient. So it's not having to draw through the pipe, right?
You don't waste as much.
You don't waste as much energy.
Makes, makes good sense. I could use that in my house.
Yeah.
But the, and is the cost for that, or will the cost for that be on the, on the spreadsheet?
It's still going to be very general. So you'll see the plumbing costs, you know, and the MEP part.
Yeah, right.
And we can get, we can dial it down. So my cost consultant can come back with very specific numbers for a system like that.
Yeah.
There's no problem with that. They, they can do that. You won't see it here. But again, in talking to you folks and what needs you might need.
It would be, yeah, it would be good to see that.
Yeah.
Similar question on fire suppression
Yeah.
and sprinkler systems.
Yeah.
Is the intent to show that on, on the? Uh is the intent to show that on on the spreadsheet?
Yes, and we're we're fine. I've just noticed I'm fine tuning that as I was today. Because uh the key there is that with the buildings that we don't have fire suppression in. The cost is the utility that we likely will have to add. So you'll be adding essentially another water line.
Exactly, yeah, I saw that, right?
Yeah, and that that's critical because of um pressure. So again, you've. And that'll show up.
Good, okay.
So. We're trying to cover as many bases as possible, but not dial it too far down in the weeds where.
It's it's a fine line to watch.
It's a fine line, yeah, fine line. Um, yeah, so. Most importantly, I wouldn't say most importantly, but more importantly, I was was again hoping to get to this point uh with just the discussion tonight where. Um simply stated, we've looked at, we're looking at um. Some recommended options right now. You'll see over there on the left, uh City Hall and Police in a single facility downtown. We're looking at City Hall and Police as separate facilities, one at essentially City Hall downtown, or should I say. Uh Police out at Big Rock. And then thirdly, we're just gonna show you some bubble diagrams of uh Public Works Maintenance Yard Expansion. They're all related, as you all know, they're all part of master plan thinking. I was hoping just to hear from you folks from dialogue tonight. Again, take this with a grain of salt. We've placed these bubble diagrams on backgrounds that give you an idea of the square footage. It's actual square footage. Uh to the sites we're showing them. I'm not saying that those are the sites that that's where it's gonna happen. Because I know there are a lot of um strings attached to, especially uh to really showing um. The Public Works Expansion, you know, out at um. Dory, Dory Farm, uh but we wanted you to have a good sense of scale, which is key at this point. Uh so that said, uh summation here, this is how we build it. I think I've showed you. Sorry, I I I'm so used to just pointing, you know, I I'm more of a touchy-feely guy, but. All those uh numbers we saw before were the actual square footages. From our programming exercises, right? And you folks, I think, remember most of this. Where it's full-time equivalents based on population of a thousand. We just, right now, we say we're at eight point two. I know we're a little less than that officially maybe, but. We picked eight point two because we know there's growth that wasn't accounted for. Uh and then at ten, ten, ten thousand, twelve thousand. And that's every, how everything is based uh on those growth projections with that uh per population. And then you simply see percentages here. And again, we can fuss with this however you want to see it, but I thought this is the clearest where. Uh you know, if you look at your department, the program exercises we've been through right now. You're you're not growing over time, you know, if it's based on this projection. Uh you're a little less than a hundred percent, because if you look at the equivalents there, two, two, and two. It's just staying constant. Uh and over time, it's seventy percent. It's not over a hundred percent. So. Again, no, there's no negativity in this. This is just showing you where projections are. But that's how you read um the growth projections. In essence, the city clerk is sixteen percent. Uh growth, right? At at that far end uh that when you become a population of essentially twelve thousand. So a thousand per twelve thousand, right? And that's the simple, that's the simple math. Nineteen percent, of course, uh chief back there knows that he's he's growing and. You know, by that time, it's he's at almost twenty percent. Uh and then that's just on your staff projections. The functional requirements are more like are essentially space, right? So you take the staff. You apply all of that to what space elements are needed for your growth in the physical building space. And that's how you see the building space uh wo- uh work itself out. And here, you know, these are, again, that's, again, police is gonna need a twenty-seven percent growth. Capacity in building just to meet the needs of that future uh future need. Uh Public Works Yard is two hundred and two percent. Now, again, that we even play with, meaning I've already fine tuned that a little bit because it was higher than that. And that has to do with efficiencies, has to do with efficiencies of the yard and things that I said. You know, again, this is just me looking at where our consultant came up with to the storage bin capacity. He was growing things by four hundred percent. Uh based on what he had heard from staff and leads. I said, that's a lot. I think the city can become a little more efficient by that time, so. I'm making some judgment calls in this because I think that was just way overboard, and again, that's just coming from experience, but. Again, no one needs to know those types of things, except for you. I just want you to be aware of how we finesse this. Uh the one outlier right now, if you jump quickly down to um. City Hall, this is this is City Hall thinking where it's City Hall uh inclusive of. Police. And just this listing, it's City Hall and Police, right? But the key here is the parking, that yellow line item at seventy-five percent. We didn't get that far yet to actually check. But we know because you're rural of all, we didn't make it a hundred percent, although it might be closer to that. You know, people are driving in, but we're saying you have to plan for a city hall that has at least capacity to hold seventy-five percent of your staff. To park. Um and again, a finesse that you guys control. You don't, if if that needs to change, you just tell us, but conservatively, that's what we're planning uh for. And then that gives us, of course, square footage. It's a very simple math exercise where that tells us the size of the parking lot. Parking structure, whatever it needs to become to to hold that. That's pretty much all you need there. Any questions to that?
Daniel, did you want us to go around the room and get opinions on the options that you had there?
Sorry, so let's jump right to that. Uh I just wanted to give you this. Oh, yeah, sorry, slide up. I'm doing this, but I'm. You you guys are familiar with that. We've refined this. This shows how we got the planning modules uh for the building to work, keep sliding. And here we are. So you can stop here, um make that visible. It's okay, yeah. This one, uh this option is saying, look, here's a Google shot of. Of where are we? Yeah, right here is uh the visitor center underneath that cloud, right? And this relocates City Hall and Engineering Departments to the current visitor center and the maintenance and maintenance yards locations. It renovates and expands the visitor center to serve as a new city hall, and it relocates the maintenance yard right now, which is back. Back here, if you're sensing where you're at. To scale, again, fitting all the building elements in. This was the one that was the. Uh conceptual thought of keeping the visitor center in place. Even though you don't see it under there, but it's to renovate the visitor center. Uh and make it part of the diagram for a new city hall. Uh so this this would be an access point, again, off of the main drive. Um got a beautiful alley here, you know, that if you remember that, it sort of steps down the grade. Uh this could be a a raised connection from this point all the way back to an entry point. And or some point within the visitor center. You have a lovely elevational facade of the visitor center that's. Not being taken advantage of. Uh that in itself is one option to look at relative to that. You folks know the grade is is sort of ideal there for a stepped, essentially stepped building. It's high on the main drive, uh that's Riverside, right, back here? Riverside Drive. Um. You could bridge that as well and still drive through there, and where the maintenance shop is, the elevation is set so that police could be. Uh at the ground grade level. Uh and then not showing here, parking essentially below. Parking garage. Good access here, again, either or, you know, police access could be from this side or this side and public vice versa. But we still have even area to play with here, as you can see, there's, we're not filling out the footprint. Next option, we wanna wait with comments, or do you wanna just?
Maybe go through them all, really, because I'm a little worried. I think we can move our, just to the council meeting, right? Is that okay?
Yeah, and I think it would also be reasonable to extend this meeting and start the council meeting slightly late as well, if we wanted to add fifteen minutes.
Yeah, that's cool.
Thank you about that. Sorry. This one is looking at police out at Big Rock. And again, uh you recognize out there, it's a construction shop because it's, you know, it's under construction, and this is just our late latest look, but. Space uh.
This is Big Rock Road at the.
Sorry, yeah, Big Rock Road down here, yeah. And you folks, I know, have a two-acre track, right? Out there, track two, three, four, even, or something like that. But this was, again, space planning to show that, yes, it does fit. We we haven't ever recommended a two-story police. Um we always like to stay on one level with that. Even at City Hall, we would never suggest breaking up police on the two stories. It just, it doesn't function well. Um although I have seen it, it just doesn't work well, but that gives a footprint uh out there. And next. And then this is the summation of the Public Works Yard. It looks a little different because we did have a different. Operational consultant on board, and we didn't want to, you know, mess with what they did with their space planning efforts there, but. It's the same exercise as what you saw uh from the Beckwith uh model as well. That's just showing you based on what we know is roughly a thirty-one thousand square foot need for a public works yard. They build in a lot of contingencies, and this is where I was playing around with it a bit. Uh I kept our team with. Looking at something right around thirty-one thousand square feet, because I wanted to find something in town or roughly two. Uh which relates, if you slide up here with a slide. Uh out to out to potentially Dorton Farm, and I and I know there's a lot of things, like I said. Uh that might uh not allow this to happen, but that gives you a good idea of about two acres again, that. You know, you're just naturally, you have already a line right there next to the church. Uh but that gets you in a position where. We think at least getting Public Works out of where it's at now is a necessity that you future, you should. Uh for the future, be thinking about, for sure.
One thing I'm curious about is the space that is taking up looks. Four times bigger than the current Public Works Yard, maybe? I don't know. Is that?
It's, uh, yeah, this is, this is on the projection of growth, so that that twelve-year look ahead, that's what this is doing. So. We we haven't broken it down to what the existing size is, but uh we do have the numbers, what all the existing is. Uh it is spread out quite a bit. I don't know if you're familiar with the lot really, but. They now have, you know, bins, and Steve's not here, but, you know, we could describe more. They have material storage over at the. Um treatment plant that they've been working on. And I know Stephen and Gavin have been finessing even that lower lot, how they might use it. One of the options could be something like that.
Right, I think that's what I'm wondering, is we have existing spaces.
You have existing space to.
That won't go away.
Yeah.
And so how will we coordinate some stuff?
Yeah.
You know, does everything have to be rebuilt somewhere else? When we have current space, we aren't planning on getting rid of it. I guess that's my concern.
This is the idea. This is just the idea.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to, because that looks like a huge space.
It's actually, it's um two acres um from my experience right now is pretty much. The the ongoing, you'd say the going thing for most municipalities that. Are you and twice your size. Uh we've been seeing about two acres show up.
Okay, and then the same, I have the same question about the police that uh site looks. Uh substantially larger than what we have, and. I'm just curious, proportion, is is it?
It's, well, you saw your, again, twenty percent needed growth.
Uh-huh.
In in that projection, so that's um much larger than what you are right now. Some of that dialogue, which we could again have here, is, you know, Laura and I were talking, but um. You know, if police would ever, could ever move, what becomes of police that Scotsman trailer, you know, the four trailers, sorry.
Yeah.
Um maybe it's uh Parks and Rec or something like that, you know, maybe that's ideal spot for them to go to, so you don't lose that asset. Which I know is key to, you know, some of the things that are linked to the city, but.
So just wanted to clarify, you want to hear our opinions on these proposals? But then in general, like, if we have other ideas, you know, bring them up and see if everything, okay?
This was a workshop, and I've never been able to do any of your opinions, uh and that's what this was.
John, you want to start us off?
More question. About telling to uh question of police station size. Do you have? In your mind, the numbers or the ability to say the current police station size that we are all familiar with?
Yeah.
How is that compared to what we?
We can show you.
Need for our, need for our current.
Yeah.
Population, is it undersized, is it oversized right now?
Uh that I don't know, but I can tell you that, I'm sure I can.
I'm just curious, because I can give us a relative comparison, like, right now, that's undersized.
Yeah.
And we're trying to compare to that, what we already know, we had gross numbers. Imagine something that's intangible right now.
Yeah. I think that would be helpful. Right, what do we have now? What would be ideal for our population size or our current staffing, probably current staffing? And what would we need? I mean, one other question that I would have is, is it typical that a city grows proportionate to population? I mean, there's sometimes economy of scale as you grow. Is it typical that a police department would scale? In proportion to population? Do you know what I mean? Like, those are questions I have, because I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I can't respond probably as good as our program planner, but he he would have a good. Response to that. I just know we're using the data that he has, which sets it up that way, but. I can, I can get him to answer that for you a little bit better. And just to follow up, we do have, right now, the police out there is roughly six thousand square foot that building. So. This one, if we. Well, I was gonna say, as I said, we could go back, unless you want to just keep talking, but. Actually, yeah, no, let's just stay with this discussion. I I can follow up with that, because numbers there. Yeah, I mean, you can see the direct comparison, but.
So I have a list of thoughts, and I am happy to start unless somebody else is really rearing to go, okay? Um and these are just like, I don't know, a lot are just random thoughts that I have. So one is, since we're on this picture, I'll start here. Um Dory Farm said. I would hate to honestly think of anything getting developed right next to it, because it's a park-like setting, it's historical. The idea is when you're there, you look and see the valley, and it really feels like at that time what it looked like. So for anything to get developed there, besides maybe some kind of park extension or beautification, I I couldn't. I honestly couldn't handle that.
Hard pill to swallow.
Yeah, um I just don't think it fits with um. And just thinking about what traffic is like over there um with elementary school and every, and the way that curve is. And so big trucks coming in and out of there, it just doesn't feel right to me. So I just wanted to say that, first off. Um in regards to single facility downtown or separate facilities downtown in Big Rock for City Hall and PlayStation. Anything regarding police moving, I would want to understand how that affects response times, so. I think that would really um be important to me before I had really any opinion on where the police is relative to where they are now. I am interested in the police site overall. It was something that had been mentioned before, like, what about where the police station is right now? Could that turn into a location for a city hall? It's like tucked back in there? How high could you go? What would it look like? So I'd be interested in hearing about that maybe, and if that doesn't work, what the reason for that would be um.
I think in terms of redeveloping any buildings like the visitor center, I would just want to understand. How you protect the facade, how, you know, that that's such an icon in our community. Um and I've always thought about too, if we ever did sell those buildings, how do you protect them? Because they're so, you know, we as a city need to like set that example of um preserving history in our town, you know? And if we just sell it and don't have any protections in place, it could get redeveloped into whatever. So I just want to understand.
I just want to understand what that looks like, you know, that redevelopment, how do you protect it? But in terms of that, I mean, I lean more toward single facility for police and City Hall. I think that works for a lot of reasons, but I'm not opposed to separate facilities. If for some reason that just works better. So with that, I'll stop there and pass it on to, I don't know, does anyone else want to? Go ahead, Amy. Mayor, sorry.
Thank you. So, you know, I think about this from not just the aesthetic perspective, but the actual functionality of the way the city operates. Because I've been running the city for more than four years now. And one of our biggest efficiencies is not having most of the staff in one building. And that includes the police department. So unless it can be shown to me strongly that it's going to be a benefit to continue to have core city operations separate from the police department, I'm really, at this point, stuck on trying to make sure that everything's under our roof. Besides the staff efficiency side of it, I also think of it from an emergency management component of the fact that we currently don't have an emergency operations center. And having everybody in one building with an emergency operations center within that city hall where police and all of staff are in one place would be very, very beneficial. From professional experience, having to go offsite from facility several miles away in a county to go to the emergency operations center was a huge hassle. And even in a small city, when we've been dealing with snowstorms and other events, when we had an E O C up here, it was very disruptive because we didn't have access to our equipment. And we didn't have access to the same resources that you have in that building. And when you're working on a tight timeline with the small staff, that's really important for functionality and response. The other thing, other reason that I really like the, the single facility aside is the, the cost efficiencies of being able to have everything in one place. And for example, council chambers and emergency operations center can be multi-use space. And one of the things that we are really lacking in the city is space for community to meet. Even with, even if the city were to keep the visitor center and the rec center, significant investment need to happen in those to make those usable for the public and bring them up to code. However, as our city grows, there's going to be more need. The need is going to continue to grow. And as we had in a discussion earlier, for example, some of our nonprofits and arts groups, having that community space in City Hall where there's also access to staff would be a benefit and create some efficiencies and congruency in the way that the public interacts with the city. So obviously I've been thinking about this a lot for over a decade in trying to also impart the actual experience of running the organization in the current facilities that we have just is not efficient and doesn't work very well. We, we lose a lot of time. And we lose a lot of connection. And if you are not in the same building, the silos can get created pretty quickly once we start going back to in-person.
I think that's, that's a very valid statement as well. And just to be clear again, these, this little diagram too, relative to the visitor center, I was conceptualizing that as a renovated building. Not a re, what, demolished or anything.
Yeah.
Essentially renovated and becoming a community asset. So your public room there, for instance, might be truly a community room. And you essentially walk by it before you get to City Hall, which might be behind the whole, and so that's part of that discussion too.
Uh, council member.
Well, I really like the idea of repurposing and repurposing City, City Hall as part of the visitor center. And I've always felt that that was a terrific opportunity to protect a facade, still do something towards the, the river that was complementary with the historic character of the city. And, and I think it, from a community development standpoint, I think it really creates that sense of city center. And, and can be, I call it the string of pearls, where you have a core and you build out your community function, your economic development strategy from the core. If you think about, you know, traditional planning, dargan with all the circles coming out of the core. And so, and to your question about how you control, if you, if you were to do some, if you weren't to use the visitor center, which is my preference. There is separate state law to dispose of property, maybe not the visitor center, but something else where you can control what that looks like. It's a whole other procurement process. And it, it has its own R C W and you use a request for proposals where you solicit, solicit your developer. And there are covenants placed on the property. One of the issue I always had with the whole D F A parking lot was we do not have covenants on that property. I think it was a mistake not to do that. And in a redevelopment of a city land, for lack of a better word, you, you have that authority under state law. Where you can say, no, these are the elements you've got to have. This is the kind of, you know, you can actually have illustrations of this is what we're after symbolically. So I just want to encourage you to think that you have a lot more control over development than you've exercised in the past. And I've seen that method used a number of times. So I, I just think redeveloping the D B C to be a heart, the heart of the city could be so awesome.
Councilmember Hope.
So the, when I got to the picture of the visitor center and this, I, that was the one that excited me the most because I just, I didn't even imagine that you could go back further. I think I briefly heard something about that we own property back there, but just never thought of that. And so that was the one that excited me the most, to be honest. I love hearing what you, your thoughts of the sides of that building, how the character that it has. Maybe we can incorporate some of that into, you know, to a new city hall. And you mentioned the police that they should stay on one level. And I do know, like, City of Renton has a police station, but then they have like a city hall and other buildings up on top. So I don't know if that was a vision of yours that going up?
Yeah. No, that, that's exactly it. You know, if a police could still stay on its own, but going up with City Hall is.
Okay.
You know, and that, again, I, we're maybe getting into the weeds because it's so far off, but you, you set up all sorts of potential if you think about roof decks and things like that for the building, you know, it's like you're on the south, that is, yeah, that's the south facade, you know, and you have the potential to be on a roof deck with a public, public private space that connects back to the street through it, you know, all this. And it just, it sort of gives you a new vision for what City Hall could be and still use the historic frontage of the importance of Deval, which we just really get excited about. You know, it's like a modern building behind the scenes that still keeps your presence of, you know, historic Deval. So there's lots of opportunities. I, I always, I get excited just to see those beautiful art pieces, your big wood panels that, you know, I, I mean, literally you can see flags like that, art panels or something pulling people back to the entrance of City Hall or something like that, you know, and again, getting way too in the weeds sometimes. This is, this architects, you know, we, we do the facility stuff, but we love talking to you about this thing, trying to get you excited about some of it.
Anyone else?
Rick.
Uh, I can't go first. Okay, councilmember.
Go first.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to concur with councilmember McHenry. And I don't think it's just the people that have nodded their heads in this room. I think the community would be pretty disappointed to see public works yard going on that site.
Yeah.
And that'd be, that would not uh, make people pleased.
Yeah.
So for that, I, yeah, I agree with that. But what I'm trying to understand is we look at these different facilities and the sizes and where they would go is how does that fit in to our other assets? I think that's why we really wanted to hire someone because to look at it as a whole. Because if we just said, hey, go tell us how much square foot we need for each thing and just design us a building, that's not, we needed the integration of what we already own, how we can use what we already own and how it fits into a potential new building. That is where I really wanted an understanding. Because clearly, like for example, if the police station is repurposed into Parks Department, well then, some of the employees that we're projecting for twelve thousand people would maybe be there. So how does that all fit in? We're spending a huge amount of money renovating the public works building into office space. Where does that fit in? You know, I mean, if we're going to build a new city hall, even in five, ten years, that's a huge investment. Would we sell it? I doubt it because it's on, you know what I mean? Like how does this, how do all the pieces fit together? So we don't get down the line. And then we're like, oh, we have all this other, well, we really, maybe we want this, you know, how does it come together? That's really what I'm trying to understand. Because I do think we have other properties and there is a level of virtual communication that has just escalated rapidly. And I see that as being the future. So when I look at this, I think, yeah, it'd be great if we were all on the same location, but yeah, I mean, we have other spaces too, and there might be some practicality of some of those functions still staying in proximity to where they, you know what I mean?
Do you have any big picture thoughts, like for the rec center, for instance, or?
Oh, I think that I want that to be a community building, but or somehow.
Repurposed for that, right?
Potentially. I mean, it already is. It's, you know, it's been used as a community building in the state it's in, honestly.
Yeah.
And it was well-loved and appreciated. So I don't see any reason why it would need some massive overhaul to modernize it when I think it was maybe ten years ago, it was renovated to be a youth center. And so I, I think it has had a lot of ADA upgrades. So I would just love to see, put it back out into usage by the community. It's a great asset.
We think we did solve the, solve the slide.
Yes. It's a beautiful building and I think our community values
Yeah.
the memories and the, the histories of those buildings. Councilmember Schaefer, did you?
I absolutely have my thoughts. Let's, let's see. So in my opinion, the, you know, just to, you know, I guess regurgitate what's already been said. Public Works Building by Doherty Farmstead is a no-go. You know, that's just not a Deval thing. We want to keep that space open for, for many, many reasons. Not to mention that the intersection of Cherry Valley Road and Highway two or three is completely dysfunctional. So we don't want to make that situation worse than, than what it is. Let's see, as far as this idea, this also excites me. I'd like to see some additional options. And I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but just so I understand, here is, is an elevator elevated over this parking lot and essentially what would look like a second story on, on.
On top of police.
Yeah, okay, good. No, that's what I thought. That's good. Another, you know, possible option would be a second story on this whole parking lot. Frankly, if you look at this parking lot, you tell it's a dis, it's, it's, it's not a good parking lot because you can only park on one side of it, right? So it's not efficient as far as parking is concerned. So I'm wondering what, you know, building would look like, possibly a two-story building.
Yeah.
There at the parking lot, given us two levels, not just one level, not just in this one little, little part. I, I would be interested in seeing, you know, seeing that idea. I, I do like the idea of a, you know, a, a office space walkway over, you know, some sort of repurpose of this, you know, this facility, although I don't know if we have any place else we could move public works, the public works yard right now. But with a second story on here, you know, perhaps it could be, still be combined public works and, you know, and police. The other thing, we don't have a slider, so I'll sit back down. The police building. There's a, yes, not on any, any, but there's an area behind the police building, parking lot right now. And again, yeah, we'd have to think about parking, although I, you know, if you look at the police building on Google Maps, that police building could be expanded to the south, take over that what's now a parking lot. There's of course that, you know, that circle parking in front, but there's also a highly underutilized parking space up in the commercial buildings, just right up that hill. That could be, it's not good for, from an accessibility point of view, but it would be good for, or that's not an issue with people, just a few steps, stairs. Obviously it'd have to be some kind of agreement with the businesses up there, but nobody parks that. And it's just, there's a bunch of parking spaces there that are unused all the time. So I think we need to do a little more thought on what, you know, what possibilities we have here. And not, not assume that we're going to be limited by parking. We could have, you know, we could have some sort of agreement with, like I said, with those commercial buildings there. You know, potentially expanding the existing, you know, police, you know, police department building.
Yeah.
That type of thing. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see some other options, I guess. I know, I mean, we could come up with options forever, right?
No, Rick, that's excellent. I mean, that's what we, again, that's what I needed to hear.
Yeah.
I haven't heard from you folks at all.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're, we're just going from the outsider coming into Deval, but not literally having this work section like we've been having.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a great suggestion.
And just, just to reiterate what others have already said too, I, I like the idea of a central downtown presence, City Hall for the police. Chief, I don't know how you feel, but I like the police department real close to down, downtown. I think that makes, makes good, good sense. I also like the idea of repurposing our existing buildings, even when, you know, some, you know, some of your costs are like, well, I guess we only have the public works. But yeah, I realize some of the costs may be quite high to repurpose them and get them up to, you know, up to speed with, you know, with H VAC and everything else, but, but I think we need to consider that.
Relative to Big Rock, what's your thoughts? I mean, again, I, I wasn't knowing, I'm trying to find the public works ideal spot. I don't think that's still public works out there. I mean, that's a housing development, so.
I was gonna ask, is there an attractive place? I mean, they look like really cool and.
You can scream these to your heart desire.
There are ways for it.
Do it. But I just can't get my gut around it out there.
Yeah.
Brand new development. Because you have the two acres already out there, that type of thing. If you can work on, again, I, I ran in my head again, if you can find this two acres somewhere that, you know.
Well, we used to own the piece of property that was right next to, well, one building, we used to own them all, the buildings next to the wastewater treatment plant. And that had been identified as a good location. And sadly it was sold for, I, I don't know, I can't, I am not supposed to be focused on the past, but I still, I just run through over that. Because I think that would have been a reasonable location. Proximity to the wastewater treatment plant, I, I just, I can't even comprehend it. But I'm going to move on and say, is there a possibility there is some land we own tucked behind it still that gives access down to the road to our outfall of the wastewater treatment plant? How much of that do we own? And could any of that be repurposed as part of, you know, maybe the guard is not all in one spot like would be ideal. Sometimes you don't have an ideal.
Yeah.
You have to deal with what you have. And so is there a possibility that some of that area could be repurposed?
Definitely. Now that I've heard from you and again, we showed the door because we found two acres.
Right, right.
I knew it wouldn't fly, but there's definitely, we want to look at that. I think because you're going to need a fallback there regardless.
Yeah. And even if we have to buy back some of the land, I don't know. I don't, I don't even know.
I think I need to hear fully from Director Thomas Wondoway and then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know, I, when I just heard some of this information too, and Dan heard a lot from me, and like, Doherty Farmstead, that is not going to fly. You might as well pick that off your list.
Because I got a big pencil here.
I know.
I would say that you, we, you need to look at the grade of those two rows going down because the police is going to be there. They need to all get out of that in the winter. in the winter, and right now we fly down it.
Yeah.
So on this, where you have, like, right here, and then you really need, are gonna have to then adjust all of Stella, where people think they have parking, that's really a right of way. Because that's gonna be integral looking at. So I think there's like, you need to look at the, maybe a little bit more of kind of really what you would need to do. And I heard from council members, because I've talked to them over the last couple of days, you're gonna want to be careful of how much goes on behind the visitor center so that you don't lose that back facade of that area, and there's not a ton of great change. I'm not sure that you can really get a sky bridge or something of that nature. It might be where you have to, like, create a ground floor connection. I think one thing that you could think of, and I think a councilor might have actually talked to me about this, but, you know, we are gonna be looking at potentially buying some more parkland to put, you know, as part of our Big Rock Ball Field, and maybe two acres of that could be designated for Public Works, so maybe think about that. I am somewhat opposed to a seventy-five percent parking calculation in downtowns. I think that will impact our businesses, and there's, we don't have transit, so there's no way that city employees are not gonna be driving every day. Anyway, those were kind of the big pieces that I thought about that I, and I didn't share everything. The other thing I think you have to think of is we go through cycle where we need LTE positions within that facility. So planning technically didn't change its FTE, but every, you know, seven years, didn't they request two or more LTEs for a year or two or three? And that's my issue that I need to go through with you, but I think every department's gonna have that in some cases.
I think we have most of that too figured, but I heard one more today when she was talking, which, again, right, it was a staffing issue for just the arts, you know, I mean.
Well, I think emergency operations, I haven't seen really in there, and that is key.
That's big.
I think it is, while we don't hope as potentially fund a portion of this facility. I don't want to take up.
John, did you want to throw in any more two cents or?
I like the idea of, you know, bringing in city all the way to, and I think, yes, it attracts most of us to this, but I don't think we should try to shove it all in one place if it doesn't function at work and isn't fiscally responsible. So I think we, if we go with this, we need to, we owe to the community the ability to explain why we went down maybe a less fiscally responsible path. Because it's a future investment, like you were talking about, that you, you know, there are efficiencies that will be gained, and just, you can't, it's hard to quantify. But it does happen, I've worked many jobs where I had the exact same job from building, across the hall, to all people I need to work with. And we got so much more done than the exact same job. Two hours down the road, because I had to go literally just a couple of blocks, but it doesn't work. Just fails efficiency, you can't, it's hard to quantify it. We just gotta owe that, be able to, and if we go to one place, what are we gonna do with those other rooms? We owe that to them. We need to, we need to have a plan with that. Good, I want to walk through the town, and someone says, why do y'all do this? We had always faced a problem, here's where our plan is. Life is, oh, we'll figure it out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, where the plan is, we're gonna sell it, or we're gonna, we're gonna turn it into a community center, or we're gonna tear it down and make it a park. I don't know, I'm sure the police officers probably don't like their doing. I haven't really talked to you guys, but I imagine, you know, they care for it, which is always it is, and it's been pretty old.
And we're, we're getting in a new locker room, so.
Yeah, but also the police officers, they'll just do whatever told them. Those are awesome, so.
Well, we are out of time. Do you feel like you got a pretty good feel?
Yes, yeah, I really appreciate this, everybody. This is so helpful, um, here, so.
Well, thank you so much for coming and chatting with us and showing us some options.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, we're gonna move ARPA, because ARPA is already on the next agenda, so can we just talk about it during that, or do I need to add a separate?
It's on the agenda.
Yes, it's on the agenda, so I think we can, I think we can just discuss it during that, and we'll just, we'll do the round robin style on it, so it's to be time efficient as we go, but.
And so we'll go into adjourned seven twenty-four, and I really appreciate you letting us run it into you, because that was really important to get to some of that, so I appreciate that.
And so we will reconvene with the beginning of the council meeting at seven thirty, so we have time for a bio break.
You know, Rick, you can just tell if it's getting late if I start sweating. That's how you know about seeing o'clock.
So excited. We've never met Daniel in person.
I know.
I'm two years, two years.
You know what I mean, so I know.
Jennifer, right? A friend of mine knows her, and had also been like, like, they're getting on you, and I'm like, okay, but it was kind of, it was a little odd. Know that they know, like, the money we gave them was for, you know, the cost to, like, pass and then sometimes it's not just.
Businesses don't want it.
I don't know, and that business had just changed hands. So like, I, I, but I, I was. I don't know what exactly they were looking after.
I don't understand how they're gonna get in and out.
Oh, that secondary road, the road.
Yeah, I mean, she was ninety-eight, so it's hard to. Yeah, yeah, but anyway, you did ask to walk through that.
Oh, the, um, not talent league, it was the.
Yeah, booking, yeah.
Did you figure it out? I mean, I was like, I was like, I was like.
Yeah, I can show you. It's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's, it's, I think it's an easy tool for us to use. I still want to, still need to respond back.
Jen or Jennifer, um, right. And actually, she's.
My wife, Remington's daughter. It's not funny, small world, it was a small town, right? So, yeah.
I.
But, but I still feel very small. I can't even, I, I have all time.
Okay, my life is better now, hearing you say that, I felt really bad. There's way more I want to do that I just don't have time to do. And, you know, and I'd rather do a few things while I retry to do too much, but I think that would reach, like, you've already done with Chifer, and, you know, getting those responses is really helpful, because even if it doesn't work out for something with ARPA, going forward, you know, like, it's still. Because, yeah, ARPA, sorry, like, I would love to see some kind of non-profit, like, grant programs or whatever. And I think it's important, I, you know, I was just in Austin areas, um, and for spring break, the five kids, you know, and we went down to San Antonio too.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah.
And they have historic buildings, and they maintain them, and they say, like, maybe that's where they're going. I was thinking about that, I was like, yeah, arts organizations that throws a little art at me now. But like, I think about, at least the city has staff to manage it, or I'm like, that sounds really consistent. You know what I mean? It's like the, the principles of these are key, I mean, you know.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, I like that, by the way.
So.
It's all the arts, it's just the question.
Yeah, and as economic development, because people will come for an arts.
Tourists coming from out of state, like, I, you know, I didn't do it, just to, because it's a nice place to visit.
I think, you know, when I plan trips, I use TripAdvisor, it's kind of like, here's my trips. And I think, okay, if we had one first of all, what would you put in there? Like, what would you put different?
Do you need a thing?
We do.
To the restroom? What? I shouldn't even go. I think I'm fine.
I need, I need a water.
I just wanted to see matters for the time that I had.
All right, so we've got one member in the restroom, but we're gonna go ahead and get moving because it is seven thirty. So I'm gonna go ahead and call the Tuesday, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two Duval City Council meeting to order at seven thirty-one P M. We are beginning late because we are having a robust discussion in the community, the whole, about some of the draft, draft results of our government facilities planning process, and we definitely needed that time as a group to have a more broad discussion. So thank you for those that are watching and your patience as we wait, began this meeting late this evening. So with that, we will go ahead and take roll. Clerk McMillan.
Councilmember Isaacson.
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer. Mayor Protem McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Mercer. Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Naplin.
Here.
And Councilmember Lingal.
Here.
As Mayor Overlander.
Here. And of course, first meeting in person over two years. I already messed up the agenda, so we'll go ahead and stand, and please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
All right. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, do you have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
So moved.
Second, Councilmember President.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have any comments from the audience this evening? And first, I will ask the clerk to see if we had any written comments.
Um, no, we did not.
All right, and do we have anyone participating via Zoom that would like to speak? And if so, please go ahead and raise your hand, and the clerk will call on you, and you'll have three minutes to speak to whatever topic you wish.
If you're in the audience, please press the raise your hand icon if you'd like to speak.
All right.
Yeah, no.
Seeing none, is there anyone present? It looks like we are just council and staff this evening. So we'll go ahead and move forward to approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to mayor's report, I will be brief this evening, but first of all, I just wanted to say it is great to see everyone's faces in person. This is the first time since twenty twenty that we've all been in the same room together at once for an official council meeting, and it's also the first time that we've had the pleasure of meeting our city attorney in person as their firm came on board during the middle of the pandemic. So I want to thank Mr. Daniel Kenny for being here in person and welcome him to our first in-person council meeting since he's been on board. It's definitely a thrill, and I think we're all happy to be here. So moving on to my report, it'll be relatively short tonight. Didn't have as much time to prepare, but I did want to first say thank you to Councilmember McHenry for managing our last council meeting, as we all know, we had a pretty serious police incident in town, and I had to leave to go assist the police department with that. So thank you for taking on that at the very last minute. Tomorrow, we do have the Sound Cities Association Board meeting, so I will be attending that. And then we received great news from the county late this afternoon regarding one of our grants that we applied for through King County and have been awarded a hundred thousand dollars for the planning for Big Rock, Big Rock Ball Field, the next phase. So that's a huge win for the city, and Mr. Lenishewski is not here tonight, but want to thank him and his team for getting another huge win for Public Works and for the city. And that will conclude my report for this evening. Do we have the report from King County Fire District forty-five?
No, no report.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then we will move on to the Duval Police Department report. Chief Dubak.
Good evening, Mayor. That was council, city staff. Members of the community who are listening, Chief Dubak, Duval Police. I'm here to present a police staff report for March twenty twenty-two and an update on our twenty twenty-two work plan. We continue to remain busy, are recruiting, hiring, and training new personnel. Our recruiting, our recruit academy is doing well, he's still scheduled to graduate on the sixteenth of June. Our two lateral hires are progressing well through the field training, and they started their last month this week. So they're on their final month of training, and we're excited to get them on the road. We started a background process on an out-of-state lateral candidate and hope to have the background report by the end of April. And this was our last candidate on our encouraged eligibility list. So we'll be doing another round of exceptional entry-level applicant interviews on April twenty-fifth to establish new lists. And thank you, Councilmember Schaefer, for helping us out with that. On March twenty-ninth, we host, we hosted a supervisor skills assessment to fill our sergeant, open sergeant position. We had two candidates participate in that assessment, and one of them is currently in the background process. Due to an illness, we had to reschedule the administrative assistant ORB reports that were scheduled for yesterday and today. And they're now scheduled for April twenty-sixth, and we had fifteen applicants apply and ten that confirmed with those ORB boards. I have a follow-up meeting scheduled for tomorrow and next week to discuss possible mental health professional resources for our agency. I hope to have something ready to present to council soon. We are on track to begin our water safety program. We have our wave runners getting outfitted with the equipment needed and the new striping needed for the police on them, and then our patrol staff has obtained their voter certifications. And the training starts the first week of June for their operations, those two water craft. We have included our twenty twenty-two work planning packets. We are on track for our mid-year and departmental training meets. As you can see, we have several community events scheduled for the remainder of this year. We're excited to get back involved in the community and do this community outreach in Duval Days, be back to full festivities. We're excited about that as well. We hope, we have also included the twenty twenty-one March and twenty twenty-two police stats in the minutes from our public safety meetings past month for your convenience and review in your packet, and I'm wanting to know if there's any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief Dubak? Councilmember Schaefer.
Question and comment, I guess. The question is, how many? I, I know we have sergeant position, we have one or two, but how many officer positions do we have?
We, we have the sergeant position, which we hope to fill. We have, and we apparently have two plus the point five positions still left to fill for patrol officers, so if with that lateral candidate is successful, that'll take another one of our positions, and we'll still have one point five positions to fill after that.
So, good, we're getting there. It's just been a long process. Yeah, yeah, but, but successful, successful, but and the, I guess the comment, the comment is, I just want to remind everybody, we're gonna have, we feed on the street, we feed on the water, this summer, jet ski patrol, and I, I, I know you guys have been progressing through training on that, and I'm excited to finally get that, get that going.
Yeah, here as well. It's been absent for a couple of years, though. Could be good to be back out there.
And Councilmember Hoag.
So I guess, are you gonna be doing the helmet distributions this weekend, possibly?
I talked, I talked to Chief first, and he's going to, he's still getting the supplies for, on the helmets from the other agencies involved. And he's hoping to have them ready for Duval Days. He said he won't be able to have them ready for this weekend, but we hope to have them for Duval Days.
Thank you.
And how many sizes are we gonna have?
I'll have to check with him.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Chief Dubak? Seeing none, thank you, Chief. Moving on to council committee reports, first up is Finance and Administration with the procurement policy update. Mayor Protem McHenry.
The update is, trying to remember the last time we met, like as a council, so to get it right. I think, so we have a meeting this Thursday. Did you guys meet last week or not? Okay, so I mean, we're well over, I would say, well over two-thirds of the way through. It's all downhill from here, but in a good way. So I think we're meeting this Thursday and we'll hopefully be able to get really close to wrapping up. And if not, maybe just another meeting after that. So was there anything from the last finance meeting that, I know you had chaired for me because I was sick, but if you don't have notes handy, that's okay.
I don't have.
I totally hope she can, I know, I wish she was on the spot, I'm sorry. So yeah, we had also had a regular meeting the week before last with some just regular business items. But we'll have to check in the folder and get that summary out to everybody.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Chair McHenry? Seeing none, we'll move on to land use.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a meeting tomorrow and we'll be going over an Open Gov update, permit processing policy update, comprehensive plan amendment policy update, housing needs assessment, housing action plan update, and tree grant award. So it'll be tomorrow morning at 9:30. There'll be a Zoom link for an attend.
Thank you, Chair Hoag. Moving on to public safety.
And nothing in addition to what the chief said.
Thank you, Councilmember. And next up is Public Works.
Public Works. Have you guys elected a new chair?
We, you know what, we didn't meet. We had, we did meet, I guess, but we never officially convened the committee because we didn't have a call.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. And then ad hoc committees for council procedures update. Chair.
Thank you. So we did meet yesterday. It was a really great meeting. So Sarah McMillan, our city clerk, and our man for Tim, Henry, was there. And we went over, we spent the entire meeting going over the rules, procedures, with the reflective changes for the OPMA provisions that we'll be going over tonight. It's on our agenda. So we did spend quite a bit of time kind of going into the details of it. So Sarah will be talking about it more later. Great.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Hoag. And then moving on to other council reports, did any council members have anything that they would like to share with the group this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to administration with Deputy City Administrator and Community Development Director Thomas for an update on the Duval Culture Commission and City Administrator recruitment.
I guess maybe one formal question is, do you want us to use our podium or do you want us to send from here, just in general?
I think we should be a little more formal now that we're back in person and if you're comfortable to present from the podium. It's gonna take a little bit for all of us to get back into this new rhythm again.
We have to make sure things are uploaded because we don't have our traditional data account. Okay. So good evening, Mayor, Council, no members of the audience, but virtually hopefully. So this is just kind of similar what we did last time, which is just trying to pull together just a little bit more information from our departments. Obviously, this meeting won't include the police department because the chief gave a full update. We wanted to touch base just quickly with the City Administrator Recruitment Update. I am working with the mayor on pulling together information, which is our job description, our profile. I'm looking to see if we need to update their profile. I'm also working on a recruitment plan as well. We're gonna go out to a consultant for helping recruitment. We're probably gonna look at, looking at three recruiters that are just within the state of Washington. There's three of them, so we could go and send an email out to each of them and request services and what those would cost. But we're working through that process, but we're prepared to start that part next week and then come back and talk to council about a final scope. And I don't know, Mayor, if you wanted to add anything to the recruitment.
The profiles is definitely going to be updated. I've done some updates. And I believe someone in City Hall has also started working on it. Because frankly, our city has changed significantly in the last six months. Previously, we were still under COVID lockdown, essentially. We couldn't meet in person. The process was very different than what it can be today and we've had a major shift in the makeup of our council. So this time around, we'll be able to have a much more robust, more traditional process in recruiting than we were able to have last summer. So I'm hoping that that will be helpful. I think also coming out of COVID, to the extent that we are. And many of the changes that we've had are providing some additional stability at the city. We have a clerk in place. We are transitioning from a longtime clerk to a new clerk. So we have a lot more stability as a city than we had previously. And I'm hoping that that will also help us attract candidates that are going to be the long-term better fit for our community. So you know, feel free to send me any of your thoughts or feedback, but as far as a job description, it's not gonna change. I do expect to rely significantly on the consultant that we select to let them do their job because that's definitely their forte in making sure that they bring forward people that fit us and do their legwork with us to make sure that they're finding that, helping us find that right fit for where we're at today. So other than that, nothing else to add.
An Open Gov citizen service and that support that we do for open permits, Public Works, and some other items that we have, whether it's like home occupations, things that cover other departments. We're continuing to do our GIS work. We're testing and that, we have a layer that is printing and our zoning layer that does not want to load correctly, so we're working with Open Gov on that. Blue Beam software is a delay. We're working with IT. That delay will cause a launch date to be pushed to June 20th at software that they just got a bid on today. So we'll be able to move that forward. But once we get that software, it's four weeks of testing and implementation integration with Open Gov. And we'll talk a little bit more in detail about it tomorrow on our land use committee. We were awarded a city tree grant and we're gonna talk a little bit about that more at the land use committee. We'll actually be bringing forward a Department Natural Resources grant contract here in the next couple of months. I think it'll be about a month before they get a contract to us. In your last council packet, we provided information on the scope of work of that and we worked through that also through the land use committee as well. We have two planning commission vacancies. We are getting ready to schedule one planning commission interview. We are just not successful right now in recruitment. And so if there's anything that council can do to beat the streets, talk to your neighbors, go to the PTA, go to the chamber, we would gratefully appreciate it or we will likely need to consider reducing the number of planning commission seats from seven to five. We did not have a quorum once again for our last meeting and we've had four quorum issues in one year and we have a lot of policy to work through. So stay tuned on that item. We're gonna do everything we can to not go backwards and so we'll, we'll see. Culture Commission had its first meeting. It was super successful. They will be meeting twice a month on the first and third Wednesday between three and four o'clock. Cass has been helpful on this. She is helping staff it really as a volunteer just for the purpose of history. Our mayor was at the last meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is the first meeting in May on Wednesday. So we'll provide an update. It'll probably be written from here on out that we'll incorporate into your packet so that you can see the work that we're doing. But the first meeting, what we did is we went through the code, the bylaws, roles, responsibilities, the events that they typically would be doing, I'll call it pre-COVID. And these are three new members and so they, a lot of information was very new to them, but they're super excited to get to work. So that was successful. Community events, just upcoming Earth Day event is this week at Depot Park from 11 to 2. So please come on out. That's a really important event for our community. We're a tree city, so we're gonna be planting a tree, giving out trees, plus we'll have a lot of educational components as well. Duval Days had a meeting with the city, so we were excited about that. Everything's going pretty well for that. The day before Duval Days, so on Friday evening, they will have a ref run and there will be a concert associated with that in the park after, so we're excited about that. Summer Stage is gonna have six concerts this year, so we're excited about that. I don't have the official lineup yet. We should by the next council meeting. And as soon as we do, we'll send a copy of the poster to council and start getting that broadcasted out to the community. City Facilities Update, this is just really talking about, we're open, right? We've been open for a couple of weeks now. I would say the first couple of weeks, we had one to three people a day. This week, we're starting to see a pickup of double those numbers, so five or six. So we're, you know, we're excited about that as well. But it does, on the flip side, you know, somebody has to be attended to the front as well. So we were used to being a little bit more efficient and doing everything remotely. So it's just a shift, it's a shift of work for us, but we happily have opened our doors. Public Works is a pretty lengthy update as well. Obviously, they're preparing for Earth Day. They're grinding sidewalks throughout the city, so they have a new piece of equipment. So where you have a raise where like, there might be root intrusion or able to smooth it out so nobody trips. So that's a great new asset. They're installing thermoplastic on stop and bar walks, which is a yearly event. We pick certain ones every year. The crews installing covers on the dugout at Big Rock Ball Field. They're starting their mowing of the roadway shoulders. This is part of our, honestly, our annual and monthly vegetation maintenance during the spring. They are in the process of moving from the rose room to the rec center. The crews install the French drain at the dog park. As you know, we've had drainage issues out there, but no big surprise, right? It's a big flood plain down there. Asphalt paving has been added at Big Rock Road Trail. There is a trail that goes along there and it needed some repair, so they worked on that. We also have a Public Works train member that is completing CDL training, which is very important to us because we have vehicles that require CDL. Finance, our new accountant starts on May 16th. An Open Gov update for the finance portion is accounts receivable module went live today, so we're really excited about that. We've begun work on our Open Gov budget module and the utility module live date has been moved to June for a couple of reasons. One, they requested it, but also just for our staffing purposes, also internally, we need to push it. That's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Councilmember Hoag, Schaefer, and then Lingle.
So I do want to thank the Public Works for putting the new sidewalk on 143rd and First. That just, it just looks amazing there. That sidewalk was really a problem, so thank you. That's done. I saw something on Facebook that Duval Days has some sort of a link with Seafare.
Yes.
I don't know what that's, do you know anything about that?
I do not, Mayor, so if you do, I mean, a lot of events will link to Seafare and the Seafare Pirate Show would be out typically, but Mayor, do you know anything?
I know very little, but in general, events have to apply and usually pay a fee to become part of Seafare and agree to certain things. So one of the things that this should do for Duval Days is get much more visibility throughout the region. I believe it'll be on all the Seafare posters announcing all the Seafare events through the state. And so with any luck, that'll bring new visitors to Duval to spend money during that weekend as well and hopefully get more folks to come into our summer events. So the Duval Days Committee, I haven't talked to them directly about this. I have outside knowledge of how the Seafare Festival works. And so this is great news and I think it's a big win for Duval Days, especially the first year, real year coming in after COVID. So it's exciting.
Any other questions?
For me, thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer and then Lingle.
Okay, I just wanted to put the Big Rock Trail was paved, where was that?
That is close to Big Rock or Ball Park. There's an asphalt trail that goes around a couple portions on Big Rock Road. And so it gets maintained every so often.
Okay, I watched it. Yeah, it did need maintaining, so good.
Yes, so they did the maintenance.
And ref, the ref run, what does ref stand for?
That's the River Education Foundation. That's the fund, the fundraising arm essentially for our schools.
Great, great. Okay, good, thank you.
And it's just coming back from post-COVID, so we're really excited about honestly all of our events. One item that I forgot that I didn't add because it just happened today, our on-call consultants' submittals were due at noon. The RFQ produced 32 submittals and 29 that were responsive, so we'll be coming back to council. My guess is early or mid-May to go through those contracts because our existing contracts expire at the end of year.
Great. Thank you.
My question, oh no, I just have, I actually have a building code question. I was, I've driven through, I drive through Duval Village periodically and I've noticed how they fence for security purposes and safety purposes. And so I was curious what our standard is, particularly when you have, and I'm not picking on them as a development, so I'm asking a generic question, particularly when you have a building that is in disrepair. And how we, how our code addresses making sure buildings that are in disrepair and have easy access from like kids or whoever, how do we, how does our code require?
Typically, we do that through co-enforcement and we would require them to secure their site.
And so it has to like, building would.
Perimeter. It doesn't have to be the perimeter of the property, but the perimeter.
Of the, of the building itself. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Moving on to special presentations, we have a proclamation this evening for Affordable Housing Week and I'll go ahead and read it into the record. Whereas, all people should have access to safe, healthy and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity. And whereas, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities. And whereas, studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate income households. And whereas, the CDC recognizes safe, healthy and affordable housing within communities of opportunity as key social determinants of health. And whereas, everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers and the community as a whole. And whereas, the need for affordable homes across King County prior to the COVID-19 pandemic and the number of people experiencing homelessness had remained at crisis levels. Now therefore, I am the Oakrleiner, Mayor of the City of Duval, Washington. Do hereby proclaim the week of May 8th to May 14th, 2022, is Affordable Housing Week in the City of Duval. The City of Duval endorses the goals, objectives and purposes of the Affordable Housing Week and in so doing firmly recommits itself to ensure our community's recovery from the crises at hand is equitable and all people in the City of Duval live with dignity and safe, healthy and affordable homes. Further, I urge citizens to participate in Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing. All right, moving on, we do not have any public hearings or unfinished business this evening, so we will move straight into new business. We do have some media issues, but I just want to kind of make sure the council's aware, we're already at 8:00 PM. So if we can try not to reiterate things that have been said before and just be in a concurrence or opposition, that would be great so that hopefully we can get out of here at a reasonable time for staff and the fire station. So with that, we will introduce Agenda Bill 22-27, Approving Human Services Funding Grants for 2022 per decision led by our clerk, Ms. McMillan.
So having an issue with the not being able to show things on the screen here. The viewers are seeing what they should be seeing, but the screen isn't showing what it's supposed to be showing. Anybody got any ideas? I don't know. I unplugged it, plugged it back in.
I'm looking at locating screens without.
So that's not what's on your laptop?
That is, it's on my laptop, but for some reason it stopped showing the Zoom screen.
Oh, Zoom screen, okay. Oh, 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 the Zoom screen, okay.
Yeah.
Would we, do you want us to move on to another? Oh, here we go.
Sea changes.
Okay. All right, minor technical. So uh, let's see, so the Human Services Committee met um to talk about the different applications for funding. And decided, they used a scoring matrix and decided which ones um to award funding to, um. Hold on, I lost. Hold on. Dana had a, which one is?
It was um Agenda Item Presentation.
Oh, yeah, okay. And then uh so there you'll see, you know, the amount that they requested, and then we have ten thousand dollars in the budget. And then uh we have another option for if the council wanted to grant some additional monies, um, and that's how the committee would do that, and then, and then you've got the total. Um, and I think Amy, they can raise much more.
Sure, I can join in. Yeah, basically, the committee wanted to um first do what we were, you know, was requested of us, which is there's only ten grand left in the budget to be allocated, so we just wanted to give you that option first off. And you'll see a lot of zeros in there because just based on past experience and feedback from the organizations, it's better to give some people more and not try to spread it all across the board because the administrative costs for them to accept the money and do stuff with it, just, you know, if it gets to a low amount, it's not worth it. So if we were to only have ten grand, this is what we would recommend. Uh, there was a rating matrix and you saw that in your packet, so um, there was a lot of conversation around all of this and I'd be happy to go in depth um to any of that with you, but just to high level summarize, we focused on basic needs, really honed in on the, what would the City of Duval offer if we had the staff and the ability to do it, you know, those are what we're really going for. So you're looking at the Holy Innocence is like the food bank. Um, so anyone who scored high, Senior Center is also very focused around food and meals. Um, and then Empower Youth Network, we know, you know, addresses a lot of mental health issues. And we also looked at a lot of the scoring criteria, again, if you've read through that, focuses on um how an organization is able to uh say how many people from Duval that they're serving, um, things like that. Are they volunteer-based versus professionally managed? Et cetera. So anyways, ideally though, I think speaking on behalf of the committee, we would really love to give additional money, so that additional amount and then leads to the total um amount given to each of those. If we were to give an additional twenty-two thousand five hundred on top of the ten grand we still have left this year, ideally, that's what we would like to do. Um, so we just wanted to still have that original option if council was not in favor of that as a whole, um, but those would be the two options. Um, if you're wondering why any are a little lower, um, if you look at the requested amount in far left column, um, there were some other factors too, for example, the Food Forest, um, they have a lot of potential that they haven't quite unlocked yet in terms of getting funding from like King Conservation District and other places that they just haven't quite done yet. But we do wanna encourage them, we wanna give them some funds to get them going to help, you know, hopefully help them get to that point where they can secure some of that other funding that's absolutely available for them, so. Um, yeah, I guess I'll stop there. If, I don't know if Councilmember Lingle or Isaacson wanna add anything, or if council just wants to talk about if you support the, just the ten grand, or you wanna add the additional amount and, and give a little more.
Additional, we were saying, come from possibly ARPA funds.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that can be made with the budget amendment later on.
Dana would like to say if you were to.
Yeah, just so, could be made council. Dana Mason, Finance Director. So with the ARPA funding, um, does come a lot of, for Human Services grants come, comes with a subrecipient monitoring, so it would be a lot of extra work. I mean, we could definitely do it, but there, we'd have to redo the contracts, add a lot of language in there. And, and this is just something that I have been talking with Clark Cooper, um, who has been helping us out with uh ARPA questions. And so she, she just wanted to make sure that we're a hundred percent sure that we, and we, we already do monitor because we pay our grants back on a reimbursement basis. But um, there, there just would be a little bit extra if we did decide to use uh ARPA funding.
If, if I may, um, just save real quickly, um, because you can just put a motion on the table and determine, we can determine after the fact where the funds come from, um, if folks want to move this along tonight. Um, so if there are not any objections to the total that's recommended by um, the committee, I would recommend uh making a motion and approving and then coming back in the budget amendment to determine exactly where the sources are. We do have plenty of funding in the fund balance, um, and many of our contingencies, fully funded reserves are fully funded. Revenue is doing well, so regardless of ARPA or general fund, we have the funding available.
I just had one comment, um, and actually I'm, for, this is more for newer council members and is that when I first came on council in twenty nineteen, uh, Councilmember Hoag did a lot of research on um how much money people put into, how mu- how much other jurisdictions put into human services. And the report she made was really quite staggering and that we at that time were not putting very much money in. And um, we have been progressively doing more and I think um the research she did has helped us understand that, so I do hope we will support the uh, the additional funds. Thank you, Councilmember Hoag.
Well, thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve AB twenty-two dash twenty-seven, Approving Human Services Funding Grants for twenty-twenty-two in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Great. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Napoli?
Yeah, um, we had talked about using ARPA money for human services, and so I'm just trying to understand, are we thinking that we would do this if, if we didn't use ARPA money? And use fund balance, would we also run another program through ARPA funds first? I'm just trying to understand how this fits into our plan.
So I, I think what Director Mason was saying is that it's gonna be a significant amount of administration to account for a small amount uh for human services funding at this point. So I, I think what Director Mason is getting at is that she probably prefer that we not use ARPA funding for the small amount um and use this general fund and reserve the ARPA funds for other activities.
That, that would be my, I mean, we could do it, but it is gonna take some, some resources, a little more than normal for human services grants.
Uh, Councilmember Hoag and then Schaefer.
To leave it open if we were able to give larger amounts, right?
Yes.
Is my thought.
True, and for, for reporting, we would have to, so um uh, so for reporting requirements, if we report everything, and our first report is due at the end of this month. So if we report everything under um the revenue loss, then we will, we will have to carve out, uh, we will have to set a, a small amount aside to report what Clark Cooper is telling me that is, um, the economic development type grants such as ARPA and maybe utility payments would actually be reported under a different um a different category. So we would just have to say, okay, this X amount we will most likely be using on this. I hope that made sense.
Yeah.
This is what you have reporting in a month. It's like, this is our plan, but it could change after.
Yes.
Dana, can we just get clarification on what the, you know, if we did give out ARPA dollars, what the grant reporting requirement would be for the you know, whoever gets that?
Yeah, so it's just contract language, they will have to, they're subrecipients, so they'll have to, um, we'll have to put all of, you know, the CFDA number in there, make sure that they, they understand that they're receiving federal grant money. Um, there may be some reporting requirements on their end, so it might not be as, you know, um, is easy for them to do the work as well.
Councilmember Schaefer.
I was gonna say, I think we have some flexibility as far as moving ARPA, ARPA money around into different bu- bu- buckets, different budgets. I think we need to do what's simplest for this, for the city. And for what you said, this is not, this is not a simple thing. So I would propose, we don't use ARPA for this. We put it, you know, towards some other bucket that would be simpler to uh, to report.
I, I, I like that idea, but um, because we, we can use the, anything, or if we use the revenue loss, go the left, we can use it for any general government services, so as long as we're not and we don't give it to a subrecipient and say, hey, please provide this, this service on behalf of the city, which is what we're doing for human services.
Great. And so I think I am hearing consensus that in a future budget amendment, this will come out of our general fund. Um, so is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and thank you to the committee for bringing forth more than what we have left in the budget um and working to help these agencies out this year. Uh, moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-two dash twenty-eight, Approving Allocation of ARPA Funding uh for Potential Decision, Director Mason.
I feel that way, dude. Um, so this is actually, yeah, why don't you come up here with Laura, because I put together the, it is the next slide, Sarah.
Oh, it's the same presentation.
Yeah, same.
Is partially related to our, what we were gonna talk about in the cow?
Yes.
So we can, we can definitely have a discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure, sure. I just put together the Agenda Bill, but Laura has much more knowledge than me, so I'm gonna defer to her. Oh, yeah, keep going.
Here we go.
And the next slide.
You got it over there now?
I, well, I, when, when I used it last time, I made it go box curving, so I'm not gonna fucking touch it. There we go. Uh, so we've been working, obviously internally, but also externally with council. We had that spreadsheet that's been open for a couple of months. Um, just start putting items that we'd like to see um ARPA funding potentially used for. We've talked um the last couple of meetings about putting some projects or items up at the front because they might have a timeline in order to get something that might be for a community event or might be for um a different purpose. And so we wanted to go through these, these. Um, for the most part, they're not new, they're just, they have a little bit more information, they have lead time, and they also have a cost associated. And I'll go, I did get some uh questions from council, so we'll address those while we go through this as well. Uh, so Power at Taylor Landing, uh, that is at least a four-month lead time. I would say it's probably four to six months. We've been in contact with PSC. We know that there is electricity that was historically there. And so we do believe that the cost is gonna be between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars. I confirmed that with Public Works today. So I was able to talk to Ben about that. That was the question that we had, is that, you know, a soft cost or is it an estimate? And I would say the estimate is forty-five to fifty thousand dollars. If there is not what we think out there, which is already a line, then it could be um double that. But we are assuming that there is the line there that we can use because it was there before, as long as it hasn't been removed. Um, and so we'll have to further verify that. Uh, bleachers for Little League, uh, that was a request that came out of Public Works, and I think there's the support from like Public Works Parks Committee, obviously from us administration and the mayor, and those will also potentially be used for other events like Duval Days, but also for a Little League tournament. It'll be used for, you know, every sport that we have out there plus other um special events. And so we estimate the cost of thirty-four, uh, thirty-four hundred dollars for that. That is for sure a twelve-week lead time. If we order uh them now, we might get them in time for Duval Days, but maybe not. Um. The court of potty, community event support, that one, we are gonna go ahead and take off. I did confirm with Public Works today that they budgeted about forty-five hundred dollars. If we need to come back to council for that item, we will. Um, curtains for the mobile stage, that's a six to ten month item, and that's about fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, the stage uh modules for use as risers um and standalone stage, that also is a six to ten month. It's a larger item, it's twenty thousand dollars. I did get a question today, which was honestly a very good question, where are you gonna store all this stuff? And so I, I talked to Public Works and they have areas for storage at the building at Big Rock Ball Field, so they think that's where they'll store these items along with um potentially bleachers if they're not being used, but you can also leave the bleachers out as well. But the mobile stage, like curtains and risers, would be stored at that facility. Uh, portable lighting, um, that's an estimate uh for three of them at five thousand dollars. Again, that would be for different types of community events, you know, you have, you know, uh the ref run would like to have a concert, it's gonna go right towards Twilight, so if we had those in time, we'd probably put those up so that we can provide, you know, safe lighting from the park um to the trail. It'd also be likely used when we do our tree lighting event, anytime where you have uh something that needs, needs lighting. Uh, commercial-grade holiday lighting, we order, or not order, we last acquired holiday-grade commercial lighting probably about five years ago. So we know that we're, we need to replace some of them and add on to them. And so that was a request that came in from um Public Works and honestly, his staff as well. So that would be a good use, we believe that would be a good use of money. Those lights are fairly expensive, but they last five to seven years. And if we take care of them, we can replace the bulbs. And Public Works is really cautious when they put them up and when they take them down, they're stored properly and we do, you know, they're in pretty good shape, honestly. Um, portable fencing for community events, we, we have gotten some comments on occasion about our orange construction fencing uh for the wine and beer garden. And so this is an attempt at having some, I think, more professional-looking um fencing. But again, that'll have to be stored, so it, you know, it is a storage issue, um, but Public Works has assured me that they can put it at the Rock Ball Fields in that one building that we have down there. Uh, let's see, the Visitor Center renovations and Rec Center. We are working with our partners right now at the Visitor Center to clean up that building and move items from it. And part of that is so that we can go in, paint, refresh it inside and out, hopefully put some flooring down. This was a cost estimate from the Public Works Department, I confirm that with Public Works as well, and the same for the Rec Center. Um. It just is a little musty and dusty, you know, we've been back and forth in it. Uh, our new city clerk and I have been working through that. We met with
There was a house skeleton on the floor, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, yes, and then one item that would come back, which is not completely relevant, but we want you to know that we're looking at reactivating our partnerships, you know, with, you know, Chamber and Rotary, so we're gonna bring back as required by our insurance carrier agreements with those organizations. So we'd like to get everything kind of out and then bring whatever we think we need back in from the organizations and get into official lease agreement. So this is a great opportunity uh for us to refresh the buildings. And I did have a conversation with Dan from Arkansas, that I wanna make sure we're not wasting, you know, obviously wasting money. He's like, no, you will not be wasting money by replacing these, you know, these items, because the reality is a new facility, a refurbished facility is gonna take a couple of years to go through a process, and so we don't believe it'd be a waste of resources. Um, Depot renovations, it's this, it's, it's pretty much the same thing. There's uh the painting. Um, those windows need to, you know, to be re-glazed, and re-glazing is a very expensive endeavor. We'll have that on several of our buildings, just so you know, moving forward. But right now, the depot is the one that we would concentrate on re-glazing and painting inside and out. And potentially, you know, there's some floor repair that needs to be done there as well. Um, the one item that we didn't put on here that we'll bring back is potential support for our community events, that's really important. That's really important, I believe, to administration and council and obviously the staff as well. So we'll bring that one back in the next meeting, but these were really, you know, we felt were more time sensitive.
Well, I'll go ahead and open it for discussion. And before we start that, I, I do wanna kind of stress that a lot of these smaller items really have a long-term impact and they're, they may seem small and they may seem like, oh, it's just for today. But for example, stage risers and, and those additions to the stage are things that we talked about four years ago when we purchased the stage and haven't gotten around to getting. So it's an opportunity to improve the ability to use those assets that we have as well as with our events, provide some of those additional extras that help us extend the events and make them more successful and hopefully attract more people. Lighting seems like a small thing, but especially during summer stages to get to the end of the year, it is a big deal because you have to leave the park. And sometimes those artists, especially at the end of the season, that's when you get the bigger artists and you want to be able to have people sitting in the park longer and enjoying those events. So just a little bit more context on that. And I will open it up for council discussion and, but if council is solid, you're welcome to make a motion and then have a discussion. If you wanna have the discussion now, that's fine as well.
I'll make a motion. Okay, all right. I make a motion to approve A B twenty, A B twenty-two dash twenty-eight, approving allocation of ARPA funding at the amount requested. And in particular, I like the depot renovations and I hope they tug point the chimney.
Second.
All right, is there discussion? Councilmember Isaacson and then Schaefer.
What is the total of funding yet?
I'm sorry?
What is our total available ARPA funding?
Over two million dollars.
Over two million. So all these are like entertainment type items, some of it safety. So we're looking at the other one point eight million-ish to do more kind of hopefully community service type things, like helping people out. I mean, I know this helps our community, but all these are like entertainment type things. That, I know we're gonna get the money spent, we're running out of time. But, and I know these are long lead times, but is the next round gonna be some more kind of thoughts and ideas as to how we're gonna help people?
Absolutely, and I think one of the challenges is, you know, for example, we had limited requests for human services grant funding. So there's also an issue with our nonprofits of capacity to spend the money within our community. So that was pretty robust to have thirty-two thousand requested and allocated in this cycle. I'm not sure where folks are at, Councilmember Schaefer and McHenry on talking to the businesses, but the last, months ago, when I heard from businesses, they were not needing the support. So it may be, once we get some of that information from the work that they're doing, what we may need to do is actually shift towards capital expenditures and potential LTE staffing to help accelerate us through this, this time period. But there may not, with our community, since it has to be spent within our community, there may not be many more options for the public service related stuff. That said, things like, for example, mental health support for the police department, that can be funded with ARPA. So there's lots and lots of things that we can do that we need today, whether it's contracting out for services or bringing LTE employees on board that we can also use that for. And we can also put it towards, as you can see, capital renovations that help, you know, getting visitor center, rec center and depot reopened will help with providing that public use and getting people back out in the community. Councilmember Nathalie?
Yeah, my question, I had written in an email as well, and I don't know that this part was completely answered. It's just the, the cost of staffing to manage the stage riders and the extra stage. And I just remember when we got rid of our old stage, that the big argument was that stage took a lot of time to set up. We, you know, and now we're going to have to not only set it up, go get it from storage, set it up, take it down. I mean, we're paying overtime and even if we aren't, it's, I just, I, I think the simplifying to the stage that you could easily set up had a re, there was a reason for that. And I, I mean, I just remember when it was even suggested that, you know, we would have the disc golf baskets that they might have to be stored somewhere. It was like, oh, we have nowhere to store it, you know, it was just completely shut down that there'd be nowhere to store it. And I, I'm just trying to understand how suddenly we have room to store all these things and it's not gonna become a problem. I don't know, I'm just, I guess I'm brainstorming out loud that staff costs for, this is not a one-time cost. There will be costs associated with setting up and taking down all of these things and storing them and moving them around. I'm fully on board with the lighting, I think that's a safety issue and I absolutely, the, the commercial grade holiday lighting, I think that was in a budget, just like maybe two years ago at a huge amount. Anyway, I guess we need more. Maybe it didn't get purchased.
It, it does get purchased, however, it has a limited shelf life as far as useful life, especially when it's on for months at a time.
Okay.
So I will just, just kind of on the stage riser thing. So I provide some context to those that weren't here when we bought the stage. The old stage was manual and it was literally a health and safety risk. The stage that we bought is mechanical. And during the discussion, when we were purchasing the stage, one of the things that we wanted to do was get those stage risers and curtains over time to expand them. There is a little bit of staff time put into it. However, most events that are on that stage don't need that additional expansion. The additional expansion is for things when you get the larger groups. So like the heart by heart and those bands that are larger and have a bigger presence and bring more people in is when you need that bigger space so that they can bring their full setup in and actually do the concerts the way they normally do. So it's not, there is a cost, but there's also a benefit in being able to get these larger groups to be able to come and play and perform in Duval where they can't do it today with the existing stage.
Yeah, I guess I just worry that's something that's only gonna be used a few times a year, all of that stored. I don't know, I, I'm just, I'm struggling with that item, to be honest with you. And I don't, maybe no one else is, but I, I don't think I'm on board with that. And then I also wanna make sure that on the renovations that, it feels like we're piecemealing a lot of the things. We hired A R C to help us kind of create a plan and then we're jumping ahead and doing different things ahead of time while we're in the middle of the A R C. And I just wanna make sure if there's renovations that are recommended, like for example, I'm just, I'll just use as an example of the police department. We replaced the flooring, but then now we're reconfiguring. Now, I, I'm, I'm guessing that was taken into consideration when the flooring was replaced. But you just wonder, are we now tearing out floor we just put in? Or if the exterior needs to be painted, but then we have all the siding that needs to be dealt with that ARC identifies and we've just painted. I just wanna make sure of how this fits into a, a larger plan so we aren't wasteful. That is my concern.
Well, I think I have full faith and confidence and especially our Public Works Department in their extraordinarily frugal and really plan things out. I do not believe the plate, the carpet has even been replaced in the police department.
Yeah, and I figured that that was the case, but I'm just wondering if there are other situations like that.
No, and the visitor center, rec center and depot, a lot of that stems from staff hearing from council that they want those facilities open to the public because they've been closed for more than two years. And so be, to be able to open those and make them presentable to the public, we do have to invest money because they were deficient long before COVID. And this is basic stuff to make them presentable to the public before the rest of the work gets done. And as Director Thomas did mention in her report on this, she has spoken with ARC to make sure that this is not diminishing or a waste of funds to do this work now before that final report is done. We're at a point with our buildings, whereas we've seen with City Hall and Public Works Department and renovation of both Public Works Building and the Police Department, that we can no longer wait until we have a plan because we don't have space for people. And if we're going to provide the service to the public, we have to make investment now or continue to sit on our heels for another few years.
I would like to add too, that even though you see these funded, the timing is for, honestly, for painting and carpet is not gonna be next week. It's not even gonna be next month. It might be four or five or six months is we have to package those, bid them, and we know how that works as well. And I think what we can do is we can go back and we can confirm it, but at least if we can start to make progress and see that allocation, then we can, you know, we can come back and, and reconfirm with ARC. But I did talk with ARC and Public Works today on this item. I would say that we do want to be careful how far we let our buildings decay as far as their windows and glazing because they're, like, you don't want them to fall out. Some, there's some critical areas and we don't wanna have to necessarily be replacing from split shingle siding because it's more expensive and those things. And we're just starting to see a pretty decent deterioration. You know, will it go another year? Probably, but will there be added cost? Probably. But I don't even know for sure that we'll be able to get these done in the next six months because there's a lot of items that are in Public Works on their load right now anyway, right? They're, they're looking at projects, they have the toll water line, you know, that is a project. We're looking at the C D V G program. And so even though we're funding these, it might not happen immediately and we might be opening our buildings. And maybe we shouldn't have set for reopening because maybe that was part of a trigger as well. You know, we're gonna try and reopen the buildings as we can, get them cleaned up. We establish our partnerships, but I can tell you that the visitor center, there's tripping hazards in there right now because of the flooring and there are in the depot building as well. So there are just things that we wanna make sure that are on our list that we're going to get done in the next year.
I mean, I'm, I'm in supportive. Doing improvements to those buildings. I just wanna make sure that we're working closely with ARC as we proceed to make sure that there isn't something that we're doing out of order.
Nope.
So.
Councilmember Schaefer?
My, my hope for the ARPA funds is that it will be able to primarily use the money for investments that give us long-term return. These items are, are, you know, exactly the type of items that will give us long-term returns. So I do, I do support this. If you wanna caution us that, not to piecemeal the, the money, we do need to have more of a holistic plan in place. You know, obviously my holistic plan is, is, you know, something that gives us long-term investment. But part of that, in addition to these items, would be, you know, hopefully be more direct investment in our downtown businesses. Things that will help us draw in people from the outside, make our downtown even more attractive than it is today and bring in, bring in outside money. That will also have long-term investment. I don't have any proposals there yet, but no doubt there, there will be. But, but anyway, I'm, you know, I support this because like you say, I think everything on this list has a long-term investment in something that'll help, help the community.
Mayor Pretend McHenry?
I know we need to wrap up. I just wanna say, I think this is a really important chunk of money to get out the door. I think, you know, that a big part of ARPA and why they gave it to, you know, cities instead of just the state and counties and stuff like that is so that, you know, we have like little lists like this of like, when do we ever have enough extra in a budget to get that done, right? So I think this is a nice list to just get out the door and authorize and then we'll be able to hone in and prioritize some of those other ones and then be looking at bigger picture items. But it's nice to get a solid list just sent out the door and ready to go.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion passes with one nay. Thank you all, that's a big step forward for our community. I know that they will be thankful as we see these things move forward. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-two dash twenty-nine, Finance Department Staffing Request for Direction and/or Decision. Director Mason.
Good evening, Ben. Dana Mason, Finance Director. So I just wanna give you an overview, the current view of the Finance Department. Currently, we're budgeted at three point five FTEs, myself, an accountant, an accounting associate that does utility billing and accounts payable. And then we have a part-time accounting associate that does payroll. But due to prolonged illness, we are short one of our accounting associates. And then our accountant left us for another entity last month. We're really sad to see her go. So right now, it's just me, we have a temporary employee who's doing A P and she's learning our accounts receivable. And then our part-time accounting associate has really stepped up and she's taken on utility billing, which has been a learning experience for us all. So our, the finance staffing request is to increase the one point five FTE for accounting associates to two. So that would allow our, our part-time accounting associate to work up to thirty-five hours per week. She'd be eligible for benefits and that's what she's working right now. But she's not eligible for benefits because she's still a part-time employee. And then also hire a limited term accounting associate for just one year. This person would help with A P, A R and then also provide backup for utility billing. And we, we do have a temporary employee right now. She's, she's kind of expensive and it's, it's a tough, it's a tough job market out there. So we have someone who's temporary, but she's basically brand new to doing this kind of work. She's, she's doing a great job and working really hard, but it's, it's, it's been really challenging in our department. So that is the ask. Are, are there any questions?
Councilmember Isaacson?
So this is a temporary request or permanent request? This is a temporary until we can hire the people that looked.
So, so this is a, the limited, the accounting position for one point five to two point FTE, that is a permanent request. And then the limited term accounting associate for one year is a, a temporary, so just for one year. And, and the reason is, is we, we still have an accounting associate who's out on prolonged illness and she, she may be able to come back and we wanna make sure she does have a job when she does come back. But right now, we need somebody to, to do the work.
So we are, we have one person that's a full FTE that does increase visibility of when that person comes back. But there's one person that's not left as well.
Yes, yes. So this is.
So if we hired another person before we staffed, right?
So, yeah, so our, right now, the Finance Department has three point five FTEs. This will increase it to five FTEs. The accountant that left, we, we hired a new accountant, she's starting on May sixteenth. She's got some experience and I think she's gonna be amazing. But, you know, there's, there's lots of work. So if our employees who have prolonged sickness comes back, and I really hope she does, then there is plenty of catch-up work for our department to do. Yeah, I started, I started with the city two years ago and it's been, it's been challenging just because of COVID and, and staffing issues and, and everyone in our apartment works really, really hard, but we have not been able to, to get to where we're, we're running perfectly smoothly because we're just constantly just working our, you know, just working, working, working. And so it'd be so nice to just have a little break, get everything in order, get the standard operating procedures, you know, set up and, and just set it up for the, the next people to step into the positions for success.
And if I, I can add from a management standpoint, our director does a lot of work that directors shouldn't be doing and puts in a lot of extra time. And our director really needs a balanced department so that she can focus on her tasks as director and have a little more work-life balance and not be working as much OT. Right now, I, the workload in finance is not reasonable for any department. So in addition to, you know, stepping up this one to the, you know, really just adding a half H FTE is gonna provide a significant amount of relief for the department as a whole, just adding those hours.
It's, maybe just like, cause I, I understand where Councilmember is. It is a permanent point five FTE increase. The one that we're gonna add.
The one that we're going to add for a, for a year is an LTE to try and cover for an employee that is out for a prolonged period. If that person gets to come back, whether it's in three months or six months, that'll allow our department, I would say our, our departments to do some catch-up. I cannot tell you how hard it has been the last three months in the Finance Department. Other departments are trying to help pick up, you know, pieces and parts, but we're trying to do payroll taxes and benefits. And there's, there's nobody to do it. And so we're going to get even further behind. We have our state financials due next month. We're implementing ARPA. We've got to start our biennial, our biennial budget process. We don't have that module up and ready yet. So we're just getting this really critical point that if we don't take an action, then we will fail beyond where we'll just start to make mistakes and have probably significant issues in my opinion.
So to summarize what I'm hearing is worst case, our sick employee comes back and you're overstaffed.
It would be wonderful.
Full year. It would, I get, I, I don't, my question that come across is I don't think you need it. I just want to understand what I'm going to prove here. When I'm hearing you sort of half a minute, half an FTE increase for permanent, a temporary to home. Bridge again, you've been falling behind on as well. You're, you're in a deficit right now.
We are.
And that's going to help you, even if the person comes back.
Yes, yes. And thank you, Laura. You said it really well, so.
Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I'll make a motion if everyone's ready.
Yep.
I move to approve Agenda Bill twenty-two twenty-nine, increasing the current one point five FTE accounting associate position to two point O FTE and authorizing a one-year limited-term accounting associate position.
Second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Naplin.
I just want to concur that this sounds like, just, it's a desperate situation and I think we, yeah, we need to do this. So I think those are really excellent questions and I'm glad you asked them. But I have been in, on the Finance Committee and it's been really tough for that department. So I'm happy to do this.
Thank you. We're, we're in that situation in many areas in the city. So with that, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-two dash thirty, Resolution Revising Council Rules of Procedure to Reflect OPMA Revision for Discussion Led by Clark McMillan.
Okay, I'm kind of late in the evening, so I'm going to try to make this really simple. Do I think it is? So the, let's see, the state legislature made some changes to the open public meetings act. Some of them haven't taken effect yet. The revisions that, so revisions proposed kind of fulfill both the temporary and the permanent changes, so. Agden Murphy Wallace sent out a memo about the OPMA changes. So I went through each of the points in the memo that they gave us and did some very targeted revisions to the rules. Just, just to address those things that, just to address those things that the attorney brought up. And so then the Council Rules Committee went through those and and, and so I, I would like it if you didn't actually present tonight, but just there are some key things to talk about. So anyway, so let's see, so there's a physical, a physical location is going to be required after the emergency order is lifted. With remote attendance optional. And so there were updates concerning that. The purpose of executive sessions must be in the minutes. And I'm looking at the rules, there wasn't a section about executive session, so I added a whole section about that. And there was some language about it, but it wasn't, wasn't, you know, very detailed. And then the, the third change is public comment is going to be required, required. It used to be optional. I mean, that's something that we will always do anyway, if final action is taken. And so here are the key questions. Does the council want to continue providing a remote option?
Clerk, if, if I can, I think for expedience sake, I think if it's okay with you, we'll go around and just get yes or no's, folks. So I guess on this one, are there any folks who do not want to continue providing a remote option? Okay, I'm pretty confident he's on board, but I'll double check, but then when he gets back.
He told me that, let's get away with that.
So barring Councilmember Shaffer, everyone else is in concurrence to continue providing a remote option. So that is an overwhelming majority.
Okay, and then this is the big question that's probably to generate the most discussion. So you want to allow remote participation, so basically the Rules Committee decided to come up with two options. And one was like, the one that, that I wrote in there was just very like, yes, any, you know, attending virtually is as good as attending in person and anybody can do it for any reason, basically. And, you know, COVID's not really over yet and people may have any variety of reasons why they can't or don't want to attend these meetings still in person. And so, I don't know, just the philosophy was is that, you know, let's just make it easy and let's just keep doing this and, you know. So anyway, but the, but the Rules Committee brought up some very good points that, you know, attending in person does have the benefit, does have a lot of benefits too. And so I think that at the last Rules Committee meeting, we talked about, I, I think, yeah, so anyway, so that's, it's up to you to decide if you want to be super permissive and let people attend for any reason. Or if you want to say people can only attend in an emergency or if they have, you know, if they have something that keeps them from, from attending, or if you just want to say, hey, yeah, just attend virtually if you care. So that's something to talk about. And that's, I mean, that's just like an existential, like discussion that everybody's having right now. You know, is virtual as good as in-person or not? I mean, I don't know if y'all are going to settle that tonight, but something to talk about.
Mayor Pretend McHenry.
I just wanted to add, you know, and I think that there could be possibly an in-between there where we worded like our clerk initially did, which is really open. But then at the end state, you know, in-person is preferred, right? But then just leave it a little more open. But I, I just wanted to say, I guess, that whatever gets decided or whatever direction doesn't mean that in a year or six months from now, we're like, this isn't working well. We can always change it. So just to take a little pressure off, I think we need to remember, we can always change it.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
The word we were throwing around was extenuating circumstances. We also didn't intend to make it very, you can only do it for this, this and this. It was to kind of put the adjective on it to make it not, people was like, well, I'm just not going to go in there because I don't feel like it. It's trust each other as adults coming in for, only for extenuating circumstances. You stay home next to me. It's like, as you said, you may not be comfortable if you have to be out here COVID. And that's the same circumstances on a personal level. It's not like we should be passing judgment on that. That's the intent is to send a message as we refer, but telling them, we said, we're all here together. Not to prevent people from feeling like they're going to be terrible. And oh, I found out that Amy was actually just in one of their shoes on.
Any further discussion on that one, or are you all good with what's being discussed right now? Councilmember Shaffer.
I, I like the idea of a continued remote option. The, the, that, this is a question, I guess, that applies to both council, staff, public. All, all of the above, okay.
So Councilmember Shaffer, we did get through the first one. Well, you're in the restroom.
Okay.
So, and everyone was in support of continuing the, the remote option. And so we're on number two with regards to remote participation by members and staff.
Okay, and I like, I like the ability to provide that option as well.
All right, sounds like there's consensus.
Okay, just for any reason.
Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, we had a discussion offline about that, obviously under the direction of the mayor and the city administrator, if staff or a presenter, likely a consultant, we need them on-site because it benefits the city and it's deemed necessary or preferable for the situation, that that would be under the draft. That would, so it wouldn't be that for any reason, staff or consultant could just be like, yeah, I'm not coming. You know, I mean, it, it, it would be under.
It's simply, it's simply council saying, hey, this is, this is okay. Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, for example, there, there may be times, for example, that we have directors that don't have anything on the agenda. And it doesn't make sense for them to be here physically if they can attend from home or not attend at all. I see part of it as being an efficiency issue and using our staff time wisely. And now that we have this remote option, there are other options. Or even if it's just simply to answer questions online about something that comes up where they're not doing a full presentation, it may be beneficial to have, let them be at home versus in-person.
I'm a hundred percent on board. I mean, I, I remember looking at contracts where our consultant costs to have them travel here and sometimes stay in hotels. I mean, it's out, it, it adds up quickly. And so there's definitely two sides to the coin and I just hope that we find a good balance and staff and presenters will be under your authorization to decide if this is an appropriate time that that is an option, I guess.
It's a simple language change to just say if authorized by, you know, staff may attend for any reason if authorized by the mayor.
Yeah, I don't know what the wording would be, but I, I guess that's all. I, I think I really appreciate the flexibility.
Yeah.
So, and I'm supportive.
Great.
Okay. Oh, so, but there were two options in the packet. Did you prefer the original option? Or did you like the second option that basically it's just, it says, it has extenuating circumstances? I think that's what Councilmember Isaacson said. Now, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm just, I'm hearing that people like just being able to do it. All right. Yeah.
That, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
If I were a council member, I would say, you know, my preference would be extenuating circumstances. Moving beyond COVID, but the reality is right now we're kind of stuck in extenuating circumstances every day. So whatever the group wants, it's going to be good.
Okay, makes sense.
I mean, extenuating circumstances, it, it's not like you're going to be saying, prove it. Is it on the list of approved extenuating? Yeah. Yeah.
Do we have the, the language to be able to?
Yeah, it's just a simple paragraph and, or is it, do we just have to find it in the packet, just so everyone could see it right now?
Oh, I think I do have it here.
Technical difficulties.
Why is that still showing? Okay, sorry, everyone. There we go. I think it just did that.
So we can hear one of the sentences says, but in-person attendance is strongly preferred for the council and staff. Council and staff should attend in person unless extenuating circumstances prevent it.
Okay. Yeah, the one's just sending a strong message that in-person is preferred, but there's still the option.
Yep.
With approval, essentially. The other ones were just like really openly.
So I, I guess, whole, number one, the plain language with no caveat of extenuating circumstances. Option number two, the one with extenuating circumstances. We'll start with Rick, one or two.
So I want to make sure I understand too. So option one is we don't use the word extenuating circumstances. And it's just based on the judgment of the mayor.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, and council still manages itself as far as your attendance.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And I vote for option one. I don't, extenuating circumstances means so much, you know, different to different people. I would just like to rely on the good judgment of the mayor for.
Okay.
Option one.
Okay. Councilmember Naplin.
Option one, as long as there is acknowledgement in the policy that staff and consultants or whoever is being asked to present goes through you. And I don't think it says that right now. So that would be, can add that caveat.
There's no approval tonight, so this is good.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lankel.
I actually like to, I think you can define, you can say extenuating circumstance such as, as examples. Like if you're, if you're in Hawaii and you're working in Hawaii, that to me would be an extenuating circumstance. But you could still participate in it. That's an example.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend McHenry.
So I'm going to give a non-answer, but it's going to happen is we're going to split. And because we don't have seven tonight. So what I would say is, I'm actually okay with either. If we go with one, I would love to take like that first read sentence and add it. Because that was something I really liked that we came up with, which is explaining the benefits of in-person attendance. And it sends a strong message that we do prefer it when it's possible. I also think that this option as it stands is fine because I know we'll all use our discretion. I also think option one would not lead to just, you know, rampant, like nobody's showing up and everyone's being virtual. And again, we can always change this if it doesn't work. So for my non-answer, do I really have to pick one? I, I mean, I can't, I think I could modify one a little bit, or I would go with two. That's my, does that make sense? Like if I went with one, I would really prefer we add a little language to describe, you know, that it is preferred, that the meeting person. So that would be if we do one, that's what I ask. Otherwise do number two. I'll pass it to John.
Okay.
I go with two as well and caveat is if we do the one, we pull someone at first, that's what we wrestled over in the committee was how do we pull that into the, just open, do whatever you want to do, even if we trust people.
So I think what I'm hearing is we're slightly on the tilt of one, but still some additional language. And so I think that the committee can work with the clerk to get that in and we can bring it back and finalize it.
No problem.
Great, thank you.
I think you might have closed it.
Yeah, we did because we're having issues.
Yeah.
Bring a second screen.
Yes, for sure.
All we can see is, yeah. It's what happens when you have, like, still happen about, there are some technology, I appreciate it.
And thank you to those in the public that are watching and being patient as this is the first hybrid meeting. It will get spurious.
And then one of the, one of the changes says, public comment must be provided at all meetings where final action is taken. And so let's say you have a retreat and you kind of do take an action, even though you didn't really think you were going to. Then all of a sudden you're in trouble because you took a final action after something and you didn't have a public comment. So that was my only thought is that maybe public comment should be at all meeting types, just so you, you can make a decision on. just so you, you can make a decision on something if you want to and not get in trouble. Does that make sense, Daniel?
Thank you for calling on me. I was just going to read it again. So technically speaking, and I don't think this nuance was included in our memo, uh, to the point that it needed to be. It's only required for regular meetings.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, so the, and, and it was not brought through in the memo clearly enough. So I wanted to say that. So it's have to have a public com- uh, comment opportunity at any regular meeting. You, you can still answer this question. Do you want to do it at the rest of them? But at minimum, it's got to be at those regular meetings. So thank you for calling on me.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, council member Naplin?
What would the definition of regular meeting be? Is that just your scheduled business meeting?
Yes, correct. Yeah, great question.
Okay.
Regular meeting is different than a special meeting. So your regular meetings are codified this meeting.
I see.
And, and anything else essentially is a special meeting. Or a committee, committee at the whole or something like that, that has a not at seven PM at this meeting.
Got it. Okay.
All right.
So hearing that, um, are folks wanting to keep it as we currently have it, which is providing public comment at our regularly scheduled meetings? Okay. Okay. I'm seeing head nods. Council member Naplin?
I mean, I think this would leave it up to discretion if we did have any other meetings, a retreat or something where we wanted to invite the public to have public comment. It could always be added. This is just saying this is the minimum.
Correct. Yes. All right. It sounds like we have consensus there. Clerk?
Okay. And then just any other questions about anything that was in there, like any of those red line changes? Do you have any other questions?
Right. I'm not seeing any. I think that means that between you and the committee, you guys have done a great job. So. Thank you. That went very smoothly. Um, so we'll go ahead and move on to agenda bill twenty-two dash thirty-one, approving recruitment process for upcoming city council position, uh, led by Clark McMillan.
So I, according to the rules, Doc should recuse herself from talking about this item.
So I can leave.
So she.
I've been up since three AM. If you would like to. Um, if you're. Okay, let me just back out. My, my poor dog has only been out like once in all these hours. And let me get my up clubs. Uh, but we can go ahead and begin the conference.
I won't call.
Thank you, council member.
We get some sleep. Yeah.
It's okay. I think I can get it.
So, yeah, uh, Doc, so according to council rules, the council puts a schedule for the appointment process and, um, said she would be resigning as of May sixth. But there's no reason why we can't, um, advertise a position now and start the whole process. And so you'll see a very specific schedule. Um, so we're advertised tomorrow and within a twenty-one day application period as per rules. And then I'll do the, after the deadline, I'll verify everyone's met minimum qualifications for office. And then I'll distribute the applications to the council. And then, um, the council can discuss it May seventeenth and say, hey, we only got one or two applications. Let's reopen it for longer or not, or just say, hey, we're good and vote and just say we're good. And then, uh, the council conducts personal interviews, May twenty-third through twenty-ninth. So this is the thing where you all call and talk to the different people. And, um, and then, uh, and then there's a duck, two, submit two to three public interview questions to the mayor pro tem. And then the mayor pro tem finalizes the questions. And then June seventh, if you have three or less applicants, um, you do the public interviews, the evaluation, and then you could appoint, um, if there's more than three applications, it's a two-step process where you do the evaluation and then you vote to narrow the field. And then June twenty-first, pub, this would be the two-step, one, public interviews and then possible appointment. July fifth meeting was canceled and then you'd have a couple extra meetings in there in case there's some problems that came up where you couldn't agree on something. And then the absolute deadline is August fourth. That's to, you have to do it or the county does it for you. True.
Right. Does anyone have any questions? Right. Wouldn't anyone like to make a motion to approve the schedule? Council member Naplin?
I move to approve agenda bill twenty-two, thirty-one, approving the schedule for filling a vacancy in city council position number seven. Second.
All right. Any further discussion? It's been moved in seconded. All of those in favor of approving the recruitment process for upcoming city council position, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, unless there are objections, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thirty minutes.
Not bad.
The firemen who are sleeping below us will be happy.
Yes.